So that in fact, we'll have, we'll be in a much better position as a community to provide our presentation. Just a couple of items. In terms of the presentation, we will go according to an agenda that has been pre-established, primarily so that we can allow different representatives to provide input, and then we will proceed with open discussion shortly after their presentation. I want to recognize a few people in the audience in conjunction with my colleagues who have joined us this evening. To my immediate left is Senator Tom Attah. Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker Cruz, Speaker Wampat, Senator Ben Pangolinan, Senator Tommy Morrison, Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Yamashita. Thank you very much, Senators. I understand that some of the other Senators will be joining us shortly. Once again, this roundtable discussion is to initiate the information exchange throughout our community with regards to the draft SCIS. We know that the media, our media partners, from the broadcast to the print, have been covering this particular issue over the course of the last week, and they've done a good job in terms of providing initial information. What we are here for is to exchange, to have an exchange, but a respectful exchange of information and perspectives in terms of how we view the draft SCIS. Please be mindful, ladies and gentlemen, of the time constraints. What we will do is, like I said, we'll go according to an initial agenda that has been set up, and then we will open to the public if anyone else would like to provide comments shortly after these individuals. In addition to that, I'd like to just reiterate and highlight that the draft SCIS was officially reduced, released by the Department of Navy on the 18th of April, within an established timeline of 60 days to be able to provide comments. And on that note, the, obviously, the clock is running, and I understand that there are some comments that will be shared this evening with regards to that particular timeline. I'd like to recognize also Mr. Mark Calvo, who is the Director of the Governor's Guam Build-Up Office. Thank you very much, Mr. Calvo, for representing the administration and participating in tonight's discussion. I'd like to also recognize, albeit he is here as an observer, and my understanding is that he will not be responding to issues, but he's here as an observer. He's Captain Oud with the Joint Guam Program Office. We have Major Alvarez, and then we also have Randy, who is also, I believe, a consultant and advisor. So they will be here if, in fact, they feel compelled to respond to questions, and we may entertain it at that time. But, like I said, we will proceed with an agenda, and I believe that one aspect in conjunction with hearing from some representatives from the various organizations is to make sure that we also are able to work collectively with the front office, the Guam Military Build-Up Office, and hear their perspective in terms of how the government agencies will be providing their comments, and as it applies to the draft SCIS. So, the agenda, we'll proceed with Mr. Mark Calvo, who is, I mentioned a little earlier, the Director of the Guam Military Build-Up Office out of the Governor's Office. Then we will proceed with We Are Guahan, Our Islands Are Sacred, Guahan Coalition for Peace and Justice, National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter, Social Work Student Alliance, Fuetsen Famalawan Beyond Defense, Inasheun Chamor, and then Senator Sanchez with the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, and then we'll open up to general comments from anyone else who would like to provide some comments at that time. Okay? So I appreciate not only your attendance and your participation today, but I would also like to, once again, exchange a request that we share respectful comments and perspectives, because really, at the end of the day, we all share one thing in common, and that is to work on improving the quality and life of all of the people of Guam. And I certainly hope that that common goal will be reflective of the outcome come 60 days when that timeline is completed. So, without any further ado, we will proceed with the initial presentation by Mr. Calvo. Thank you again, Mr. Calvo, on behalf of the committee and the members of the legislature for joining us this evening. Please.
First of all, let me say, I'm a little uncomfortable sitting down, speaking, the steam group in front here, and of course, the people of Guam that are represented here tonight. But I will remain seated to make sure no one feels I'm overpowering with my former Army background and not trying to blast anyone out of here with my command voice. So, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Chair, for having me here, inviting me here. Your staff made a very good effort to follow through with my attendance, and of course, I intended to be here. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for having me here, and Vice Speaker Cruz, and the rest of the Senators, thank you for your presence as well. I'd also like to thank our folks across the fence line there, JICPO, the Program Management for this buildup program, and the Lead Proponent for all NIPA actions on this program. I was given in advance of this some talking points and questions that may be asked or have been asked by attendees in this group and potential attendees. So I took the liberties to list the questions up here, and then to, I will take the next couple minutes to answer them as best I could. So, please bear with me. The question on what is my role as the Director of the Military Build-Up Office? Just to be clear on the very onset, that I do work for the Governor of Guam and the people of Guam. I've often been confused to be Captain Oud's boss, which I would gladly try to do. I'd love to work, have a Navy man work for me. But be clear again, I work for the Governor of Guam, and the office that I work out of is manned by myself and two other colleagues who cannot be here tonight, and we occupy some office space down at Adaloupe. And anyone here and everyone in Guam is welcome to come and visit me. Okay. You see up here that I serve as the, one big responsibility from a charge, directly from the Governor when I took this gig, if you will, that I serve as a primary contact to him for all Department of Defense issues. And in that capacity, there are many, many other things besides the buildup. The other thing that you're interested in hearing here today is that I am the primary point of contact for the Governor for all buildup-related issues. Several other questions here. They're very big questions, and I'll try my best to answer them as thoroughly as possible. What is my plan, Mark Calvo's plan, for to provide information to the community from the executive branch? When I took the job, I was challenged immediately by the Chief of Staff, Frank Areola, and the Governor of Guam, to be the face for the buildup. If they had any questions, they might, that people of Guam might think about the Joint Guam Program Office, and maybe former General Bice's office, but they said, "No, we want you to be our lead and the face for the buildup on Guam." And I've tried to make that challenge to me met by offering and extending outreach, any opportunity to present to you as a community, anywhere in the community, buildup information that I might have, and to take questions that I cannot answer and address it to the appropriate contacts and respond accordingly. I leave it up to you, for those of you who participated with my information sharing on behalf of the Governor, on my report card for that. And if I rate a C or D, please let me know. I would be glad to discuss with you how I can achieve, if I could, an A rating from everyone. But that is what the Governor expects for the people of Guam, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm here again in front of you today to be able to do that. This extension of information providing from the Governor's Office is offered to every and any citizen on Guam, okay? I offer this extension as well to do this job as efficiently as I can to the Joint Guam Program Office. And honestly, in my two years in this capacity, I've had nothing but great working relationship with the Joint Guam Program Office, and for that matter, for the Department of Defense. I will tell you that in the capacity I serve the Governor, that I do not, as some of you might know, I, as a retired military officer, that I do not take my job and responsibilities to you, the people of Guam, lightly. And I do not, for lack of better terms, I have not drunk the Kool-Aid that you might think that I will roll over for anything buildup-related that may be at a disadvantage for the people of Guam and the Governor of Guam. So, I owe you that, I promise you that, and I hope I have delivered that and continue to deliver it. Also, in this capacity, and as far as providing information, I've worked closely with the Joint Guam Program Office to understand how they communicate the message that they have to deliver. And with regard to the draft SCIS, we've had many conversations with the Joint Guam Program Office to assure that the public dissemination of the message and the intent of Department of Defense is heard. I believe, wholeheartedly, they have provided that ability to the community of Guam. If you feel differently, please take it offline with me, and we will work with you. My virtue of me being here tonight, whether I am summoned or not, is also an extension of this message, providing information to the public with regard to the buildup, to the best of my abilities. Please understand again that the program right now still belongs with the Department of the Navy through the Joint Guam Program Office. And our concerns, if I haven't heard them already, if the Governor has not heard them, if the legislature has not heard them, we're here to hear them again or to hear them anew. Second question up there. What is the administration's role regarding the impact on the region with the military buildup? Some of you know or have heard that the buildup is not only isolated to Guam. There are implied and inherent growth and footprints that DoD is expecting to exercise in the Northern Marianas. The Governor of Guam has taken the challenge and has met with the Governor of CNMI, Governor Enos, and his predecessor, Governor Fatiel, and has promised to share whatever information that we have through our own lessons on buildup one, and our current lessons in this version of the buildup, which we call buildup two, and share that with the CNMI so that we can help our northern brothers and sisters with whatever challenges and issues they might have with regard to a military presence in the Northern Marianas. So, that is the administration's role, to serve as an experienced lending hand if we need to, and to provide counsel if we need to or were called upon to. Specifically, the Governor has asked my office to provide direct assistance to Governor Enos in my capacity and whatever I could help with their issues and challenges and dealings with an increased military presence in the Northern Marianas. What is the relationship with the Civil-Military Task Force and this administration? The Civil-Military Task Force, for those of you who are not familiar with this organization, was formed by the previous administration, Governor Camacho, through an executive order to allow the people and the government agencies to address this huge magnitude change, buildup one, if you will. Governor Calvo, almost immediately upon his inauguration, sought to improve upon that CMTF, which produced some very, very important documents for the people of Guam. There was very valuable input by many stakeholders at the community and at all levels of the government and private sector, and incorporate those into where we're moving forward with the current buildup. He, through an executive order, executed the Guam First Advisory Council, and under that Advisory Council executive order, he incorporated the Civil-Military Task Force as an adjunct and an advisory committee to the Advisory Council. We still fully intend on using the CMTF if we need to. At this point in time, we have not invoked the CMTF for any inputs. The previous legacy and records are large in magnitude and have derivatives that we are currently using for the current buildup. Our finance team in the government of Guam with the Governors at Adaloupe is directly tasked right now to take the Civil-Military Task Force inputs, which total about $2 billion, and address it with the current buildup. What that thing looks like at the end, we're not sure, but we will brief the people of Guam when we get there. We anticipate we need to have this discussion through Congress's intent to form an economic advisory committee so that they may, these federal agencies outside DoD can vet government of Guam and the people of Guam's concerns for things outside Department of Defense responsibility. So we're working with the Congresswoman's Office in that area, and again, with the people of Guam and those entities that would have provided information in the Civil-Military Task Force. The final question that was asked of me to talk about tonight is, will the administration be requesting of government of Guam agencies to submit comments on the draft SCIS during the commenting period? The answer is yes, and overwhelming yes. We expect our government agencies to do what they're supposed to do, and that is look at what the impacts are for the Department of Defense presences on Guam, how it's going to impact our communities. So with that, I have had, with the help of JICPO, a facilitation meeting that laid out what you are now seeing as a public release for the draft SCIS. This meeting happened on April 14th, if I recall correctly, and I had all government of Guam agencies present. I talked to them about the current release of the draft SCIS. JICPO assisted with some of that information, and I asked these agency directors and leads to return to me on behalf of the Governor by May 30th their draft comments. At that point, we will review them and provide them to the Governor in the form of an information briefing for his concurrence to move forward or advice and guidance how to move. We will, I will inform you of this, of the results of these comments. For that matter, all public, all comments into this draft SCIS is open to the public. Anyone can provide information. For the government of Guam agencies, again, I will channel them. I've asked them to all channel their comments to me by May 30th, their draft comments, and we fully intend to provide a summary comment statement from the Governor on all the agency's inputs and provide it to the Joint Guam Program Office and Department of Navy before the suspense, which I understand is the 17th of June 2014. I highly encourage everybody, family, friends, even abroad, who are interested in this program, to provide comments directly to the Joint Guam Program Office through their website. Thank you again, Senator, for having me here. I'll be here for the rest of this and be able to answer any questions, I hope, for anyone on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calvo. Senators, I'm going to ask that during the course of the comment period, that I will yield to one question from every Senator, so that we can allow and make sure that we get through this evening with everyone providing their appropriate comments. So I will go ahead and start with Speaker Wampat, if you have a question for Mr. Calvo. Thank you, Mr. Calvo.
Mr. Calvo, on your fourth question there, you've indicated that you're definitely going to encourage or request that all departments and agencies submit comments. However, you also indicated that depending on the comments that you sent, that the Governor is going to do a summary, and what if some of the comments then are definitely contrary to what the Governor wants to report, will that still be a part of the Governor's report?
Yes, of course. If there's controversy from one of the department agencies with what the Governor believes is a way ahead, there will be a discussion about those. But the comment periods allows anyone to enter, I mean, to provide those comments.
This one's important, because if they're going to submit a comment, their comments to the Governor, will they, as individual departments and agencies, be allowed to submit their own comments and that it not be, I mean, in addition to the Governor's summary?
Yes, sir, it'd be allowed. Yes, I would encourage that, yes.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Thank you, Mr. Calvo. Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Attah? Tom Attah? If not, Senator Yamashita? Any questions or comments? Speaker Ben? If you have one question, please.
Thank you very much. Mr. Calvo, the Joint Program Office was a joint meeting on April 14th with all the departments and agencies. Can we get minutes of those meetings? What was discussed? I mean, it almost seems like a pre-comment meeting and pre-review meeting, and so I think that those meetings should have been, the record and the proceedings of the meeting should be public, and would request that the minutes of those meetings be provided?
I have no minutes to record, but I do have a copy of the slides that I presented to the agencies, and I certainly could provide that. I have comments that were made on the floor that I could encapsulate and summarize and provide those as well.
Can you do that?
Yes, sir.
And again, I just want to reiterate that I think it's very important that all the departments and agencies have the freedom to submit comments as it impacts their specific agencies and their tasks.
Sure.
Over and above the general over-encompassing impact of these, of the buildup that the Governor's concerned about, and I think it's very important that we capture those and make those public record as well.
Yes, sir. Let me be clear, I might have said something that I, that might have been translated wrong. The Governor is not going to discourage any comments, and in fact, he encourages all comments to come forward and be heard. That is his promise to the people of Guam.
Thank you, Mr. Calvo. Thank you, Speaker Pangolinan. Senator Duñez, you have a question?
Yes. Thank you. Mark, with the presentations today, of course, you're going to get a wealth of information. Have you had any contact in your official capacity from any of the groups present tonight to make a presentation?
Yes, several contacts with some of the...
Yes, good.
In the past two years.
Yeah. I think it's good, especially the public that's watching out there, to know that there has been active dialogue, and so now we look forward to the balance of tonight's presentation. I just think it would be important for folks to know that all of these groups have engaged with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. And Mr. Calvo, thank you again for your presentation, and most importantly, thank you for the front office extending themselves and being active participants in this conversation, because I think it's very critical that with all the government agencies and the resources that are available to represent the island community, to look at the impacts, that certainly working with your office and the agencies working on their own and working through the Governor's Office is necessary, also working with this body. So I appreciate the Governor extending your participation in today's roundtable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to We Are Guahan, and please, if you can, identify yourself and proceed with your testimony. I take it, Mr. Camacho, I take it you're presenting and...
Okay. Yes. Sorry. I know you all were expecting a PowerPoint, but I'm sorry to disappoint you. I'm sure another PowerPoint is exactly what you wanted to see at 6:30 tonight. I was asked to give just a brief overview of the major changes that have been made from the initial EIS to the supplemental EIS, and rather than recreate it, the DoD has done a very good job of highlighting how significant the first EIS was and the changes that have been made to make this a little bit more acceptable to some people here on the island. The first significant difference is a change in the number of Marines that would be coming to Guam. It's been reduced from 8,600 to about 5,000, and the number of dependents has been reduced from 9,000 to 1,300. So whereas before, we were talking about 17,600 Marines plus dependents, we're now looking at 6,300. And again, this is all in a very concise table that's in the executive summary. The initial EIS had a seven-year construction period. This almost doubles it to a 13-year period. Population growth was between 40,000 to up to 79,000. It has now been reduced, and the biggest increase is supposed to be about 10,000 people at the peak of the buildup. The sustained population growth was supposed to be an increase in 33,000 people that has been reduced to 7,400 people. The footprint for the new base has been reduced by about 1,000 acres, and one of the pluses to that is the former FAA property, which was returned to its original landowners, will no longer be retaken back to build a marine base. And the firing range complex has been moved from Poggett to Rettidian. So those are the key differences, at least according to DoD. I did want to just take a moment to say we didn't get here just out of magic. You know, there was a lot of work that was put into the first round of BIS hearings and a lot of community involvement and participation, a lot of people that did take time out to submit comments. A lot of you all were involved in that process, and there were several resolutions passed by the legislature that voiced the concerns from the community, and we wouldn't be here with these changes, I believe, if not for that. In addition, there was also a lawsuit that was filed, and as part of that lawsuit, the Department of Defense agreed to look at all reasonable alternatives for the side of its live firing range complex. I know that lawsuit is not referenced in the supplemental EIS, but again, I don't think it's a coincidence that after a lawsuit is filed, DoD decides that there are alternatives that it now can look at. I was asked to talk about land issues in the EIS, and there are a lot, but the document itself, although it's shorter than the 10,000 pages of the initial EIS, there's still a lot to go over. And what I will say is that the most obvious land issue will be the use of Rettidian for the side of live firing range complex, and in particular, the use of approximately 255 acres of wildlife refuge, which is the only critical recovery habitat on the island that is designated to, for the reintroduction of indigenous species here on the island. There have been some proposals to give additional land to fish and wildlife to replace that, and the Rettidian Refuge, as you all know, is very controversial in nature because of the original landowners and the transfer of fish and wildlife, but just in terms of talking about the critical recovery habitat, that is the only critical recovery habitat on the island, and that will be taken in addition to about 3,000 acres of ocean that will be designated as part of the surface danger zone north of Anderson. If, well, I've been kind of bouncing ideas off of people, what I should talk about, I've given a chance to speak with y'all, and one of the comments was I should talk about personally the most glaring issues that I look at when I, so far in my brief review of the SCIS. And the biggest issue for me is not necessarily the differences, but the things that have stayed the same, and specifically, the lack of a commitment by DoD to pay for impacts on the island, and in particular, civilian impacts. I know that Mr. Sanchez was in the news recently talking about the payment for improvements of the wastewater treatment, Northern Wastewater Treatment Plant, and I think in the first EIS, it actually said the only reason why we didn't qualify for a waiver for that exemption from the Clean Water Act is because of the anticipated population growth from the first EIS. So part of the reason why we're even having to do secondary treatment is because they expected 80,000 approximately people to move to the island. We have a very concrete example in the programmatic agreement of DoD writing doubt. You know, the Governor went and negotiated and got DoD to commit to $21 million for a cultural repository. We've seen zero dollars to date. They committed to go to Congress to ask for funding, and they did that, and it was part of a bill, but it didn't pass. And if you look through, the impacts are identified and summarized very nicely in volume in chapter 4.6 and 5.7, dealing with, it's just a chart and goes down, and it says significant impact, mitigatable, significant impact, no mitigation available. And I looked through the socioeconomic impact, and they said, "Well, we're only looking at about 10,000 people moving to Guam, so Gov Guam can figure it out on their own and will agree to help Gov Guam, ask for money, but, you know, hopefully, the tax revenues will pay for all the impacts." And I would submit that that's not enough. We really do have a quality of life that we're accustomed to on the island, and, you know, if you were to ask yourself, is this buildup as proposed now an improvement over the first buildup? The answer is absolutely yes. If the question is, is this buildup good for Guam, that's a much more complex answer that's going to require all of us to talk and figure it out, because if you look at things like our schools, our hospital, traffic, noise, and I've spoken with a couple families here from Arunau and Anapsin, and if you look at the noise contours, there are only three homes that are going to be affected, and all three of those homes are in Anapsin. All right? But you don't really hear all of that being talked about. You talk about, "Oh, wow, this is a huge improvement over what we had the first time." So we can't be less critical just because it's an improvement over what was happening the first time. And with that, I will submit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Camacho. Speaker Wampat? Anyone? Speaker Ben?
Even when you also look at the socioeconomic and general services, I'm kind of curious, now they classify economic activity as less than significant impact. Does that mean there's really going to be very little additional revenue? Does that mean there's really going to be very little additional revenues realized by the government of Guam? Since, it's kind of curious that the socioeconomic issues are going to be significant impacts, but maybe mitigatable. And then, but the economic activity to trigger and generate additional revenue is less than significant. And so what does that mean for the community of Guam, in your opinion?
I don't think that, I'm not an economist. I remember the first time we did the EIS, I was tasked with looking through the economics section. I'm like, I'm a literature major, but I'll do my best to get through it. And I don't think that the economic analysis was very rigorous and is still very rigorous. You know, there are a lot of assumptions that are made. I know that you pointed out the first time, the tax collection rate is one thing that needs to be taken into account. And there was Ms. Ruane, the professor at UOG, that talked about how over-inflated the numbers used. They used the Hawaii multiplier in coming up with the economic impact. So I don't think it's inconsistent with anything that we've seen in the past. But I do think that, you know, in terms of cost-benefit, the only benefit that the buildup is supposed to generate is economic benefit, and everything else is cost. So we really are talking about quality of life versus Gov Guam revenue at the end of the day. And if what you're saying is that there's going to be less than significant impact on the economic side, then you can come to your own conclusions as to whether or not we're going to come out ahead of this.
Well, it's what they're saying. I'm reading from them.
Normally, they will, again, historically, try to overestimate the economic benefit while underestimating the socioeconomic costs.
We immediately decided to tell the truth this time.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. Senator Duenas?
Mr. Camacho, in the original EIS and of course, now the EIS, you've pointed out quite well the differences. You now say once again that, and reiterate that there are challenges with regard to the current identified preferred location for the range. Is there a position at all from your organization, We Are Guam, of any acceptable preferred location for this activity?
All of them have challenges, and we don't really look at it as our job to find an alternative that doesn't have any negative impacts, you know? The impacts on the critical recovery habitat are huge, and there's a reason why they are federally protected and federally designated. So the loss of critical recovery habitat, and you're saying, well, you have to choose between that or us taking Poggit and building a firing range complex over it. And I think we have to move back and say, well, if you look at the number of ranges that they're going to be using, and the range that has the largest SDZ is the 50-cal range. If you look at the projected ammunition used per year, it's 200,000 rounds per year. It is the least-used range of all the ranges, and it has the largest surface danger zone. You know, DoD has conducted so many exercises here on the island, flying Marines from Okinawa to Guam because Okinawa doesn't want to have to deal with them, yet they're willing to impact our historic sites or our critical recovery habitat because they say it's mission essential. Well, if you can fly a Marine from Okinawa to Guam to train, you can fly a Marine from Guam to Okinawa to train on a 50-cal range that already exists without having to do any of the degradation. But as Senator Duggan has pointed, or as Mr. Calvo's pointed out, you know, that's not the plan. The plan is to have Guam, Tinian, Poggin, Fair Honda, Midoniza as this vast training complex. So to answer your question, no, we haven't taken a position on which site would not have any impacts, but we do believe that all of the impacts would be significant.
Sure. So is there a range, then? I think that would kind of be important to see, you know, for the sake of everybody studying all locations, is there, as has been presented, a most desirable, least desirable? Is there a least desirable, I guess, in addition to what's been currently identified?
I think the question isn't necessarily whether there's a best site, it's is there a configuration that works best for the community? And the configuration I'm talking about is one where you don't have a 50-cal machine gun range.
Okay.
Because once you eliminate that range, you eliminate basically all of the significant impacts that everyone's had a problem with in the community when it comes to impacts on historic sites and on environmental consequences.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Attorney Camacho. I think there's a couple of things that we really need to be reminded of is the timeline for submitting testimony. You alluded to that, June 17, obviously, the 60-day timeline. And then also with regards to, it's not a miracle of where we're at today. It's primarily because submissions for the previous EIS reflected upon impacts and mitigation, proposed mitigation. So I think that that's very critical in terms of public comments that are going to be submitted, that there has to be that recognition, identifying the impact of the proposed DESEIS and then providing a mitigation in terms of what the concerns are and providing evidence to that effect. And I think that you're, from a perspective that you have been actively involved in, you certainly have done that, and I recognize that in terms of your contribution in the past. Thank you, Attorney Camacho. Moving on, Our Islands Are Sacred. Representative? Please identify yourself for the record.
Hafadeh Guahuji Victoria Lila Leongoro. I'm speaking today on behalf of Our Islands Are Sacred. Our Islands Are Sacred actually began sort of meeting and forming around the Mariana Islands Testing and Training Range Complex EIS. And so really, we've been working to remind all of us that we are all a part of a chain of islands, the Marianas, and that all of our islands are sacred and not places or spaces for war. I want to start off first addressing Mr. Calvo. Thank you so much for being here. I'm going to give specific requests of our government in particular, and then I'm going to go through some of the initial reads that our organization has done of the draft SEIS and how it is going to affect our islands. So first of all, I'm glad to hear that the agencies will be providing comments. You know, the draft EIS really showed what our community can do when we come together, when we're concerned, and when we are empowered to make a difference and to stand up for our future. Because basically, these decisions are being made for our future, and technically, we don't have a say. We can only sort of make these comments and hope that they're heard and that action is really taken. So, you know, during the draft environmental impact statement, every agency had a designated employee whose job it was to read and provide comments on the EIS. That employee would report back to the other employees in that agency and encourage them to comment. So if you read chapter 10 of the final environmental impact statement, the agency comments were very comprehensive and very useful. However, we didn't really get to see those comments until they were published in the final EIS. And so for this round, it would be really significant, number one, if we could actually get an extension of the commenting period. So we were granted an extension during the draft EIS from 60 to 90 days, and I believe the Congresswoman's office orchestrated that. And so we were hoping that she would be here today, or a representative from her office, that is, would be here today, because we need to make that request as soon as possible. It's no longer 60 days, we've got 50 days to comment on this massive document. So we need an extension. If we can get the 90 days that we got with the draft EIS, that way, our agencies and the experts in our agencies that can look at things like the wastewater treatment plant and the Northern Lands Aquifer and all of these very important resources that will be strained, no matter what, 80,000, 10,000 people is pulling on our resources, and our agencies have the experts to know what that's going to mean for our community. So we'd really like the extension. That way, if the agency's draft comment deadline to you is May 30, that's perfect. If we have an extended deadline, then I'd like to request that those draft comments not only be made available to the governor, but also made available to the legislature and the community at large, because then we'll be more informed and we'll be able to provide more substantial comments as well. So that's the first request, is that we extend or try to push as a government to extend the commenting period from 60 to 90 days. Number two, that the agencies make their comments available to the public before the end of the commenting period so that we, as a community, can be well-informed. And then also, during the draft environmental impact statement, we wanted to try to direct our comments as well to the legislature on things that you can do. So during the draft EIS, the legislature was very active. You know, you passed an excellent resolution expressing concerns from the community. You held your own public hearings, and in particular, there was a three-day public hearing in which agency department heads had to come and testify at the legislature their findings from the EIS. And so I'd like to request that we do that again, that the agencies and departments involved come to the legislature and in a televised setting, as we did last time, talk about what their findings are in the SEIS. So, you know, so far, what we've been seeing is that, you know, DoD was very effective. Page three of the executive summary, we have this nice chart that shows what it was like in 2010 and what it's like now to kind of sort of, you know, soften the blow on the community that this is better, you know, that this is a good buildup, you know? And it almost creates this feeling that, well, maybe we don't have to read it. And I think the paper today, they eloquently called it buildup fatigue, that we're all very exhausted from having to read these very boring and often complicated language. But we try to read through that language. I myself have been trying to read through that language, because if we can't commit to that, you don't know what's in those details. And I think that especially from the government, from the administration, from these agencies that we're trusting, right, to provide for our community first, that we need to be sure that in those details, we're not all being compromised, that our livelihood, that our resources, our environment, our people are not being compromised. And we've got to put our people first, because we are the ones that are going to do that, not DoD. DoD has their priority area. Our priority area, the governor's priority area, needs to be the people. What are the impacts on our people? So that's kind of the first thing I wanted to say today, since I'm talking directly to you. But for our community, one of the most important things that we need to remember is that the Department of Defense and the federal government do not own our lands, they occupy them. There's a very big difference between ownership and occupation. Those lands were stolen. The families that own those lands have never fully been compensated. And therefore, during the first draft EIS, I never said, keep it on your footprint. I don't see a footprint. I only see these islands and these lands which belong to the native Chamor people of this island. And these lands do not, they're not just, you know, divided like that. We've got to break down these fences in our minds, that we think that what's on DoD property is no longer ours, and therefore, we have no say. In fact, that's wrong. We do have a very important say and stake in these lands. Actually, Senator Hope Cristovol, my auntie to my left, she once said, if we don't have our lands, we don't have a place to be who we are. And so one of the biggest uniting factors during the DEIS, of course, was Poggit. Why? What's at Poggit? Poggit has an ancient Chamor village, and people didn't want that disturbed, because it's one of the few ancient Chamor villages that have yet to be disturbed by construction and development and militarization in our island. It's one of the few places we can go to that are not behind fences. And I say that because Rittidian, Finagadz, Hoputo, which is bordering the contonment and housing area in Finagadz, are all culturally significant ancestral lands that we have a stake in, whether they're on or off the fence. So just as much as our community was up in arms about the use of Poggit because of the ancient Chamor village there, we have to be aware that there are ancient Chamor villages and artifacts in all of the places identified as the preferred alternative. So there is a list in the SEIS that identifies, just for the contonment and family housing alone, there are 11 different sites that contain artifacts from the Ladi pre-contact and post-contact periods. So this is really significant because these spaces are sacred, and we need to protect them. And in fact, these are not just lands that we need to protect and remember that belong to our ancestors, they're also lands that belong to families that are sitting right here at this table, that have never been able to get their lands back. So, you know, that's the first thing, is that we have to remember these lands still belong to us. Rittidian itself, the role that it plays in our community is that it is also one of the few places that you can still go to, granted, the gates close at 4:00, but the community is still welcome to go to Rittidian and visit the caves there, where you can see actual handprints from our ancestors, where you can actually see their drawings and what they were trying to communicate with us. It's one of the most beautiful, pristine beaches on this island, and as Leven discussed, it's a critical habitat for the very few native birds that we have remaining in this island. What is the biggest threat to those native birds? The introduction of invasive species and military weapons that have scared them away, right? These training ranges and the noise that they make, they're not friendly to birds. So it is a habitat that is important, that we need to continue to protect. So the other thing that is found in these lands are also ahmed, medicinal plants, native plants, indigenous plants to our island that'll be bulldozed to make way for more construction to support this base and to support these ranges. Another really big thing that I was reading a lot about today, I got to the section dealing with water. Water is an important resource to any community. Building 11 new wells is going to happen in any of the alternatives for this new buildup plan. What is that going to look like for our community? How is that going to affect the Northern Lands Aquifer? Who's going to pay for that? Right? And are we really willing to take on that burden? Or are we going to look at, what do we have now in our community? Are we providing enough already for our existing community? You know, you build more wells, you increase the chances for contamination, and again, we're fighting over this very precious resource. We need to begin to see that these places have spiritual value as well. And so opening up the ability for a firing range in a spiritual space, like we saw with Poggit, it does affect us. And there are people who still believe in that, right? Those of us that were taught to enter the jungle quietly, right? We're allowing for guns and Marines to be stomping through these jungles. What does that mean in these spiritual spaces? As I mentioned earlier, one of the reasons that Our Islands Are Sacred began to sort of spread this message that Our Islands Are Sacred was because of the Marianas Islands Testing and Training Range Complex. The military isn't seeing the Marianas as divided like we are, right? The only reason that Guam and the CNMI are divided is because of colonization, right? Guam went to the US and the rest of our islands went to Germany after the Spanish-American War. What divided our islands initially were not our people who couldn't get along, as we are sometimes told, it was because of colonization. And so when we look at what's happening today, our islands are being seen as one chain for training, for war. Is that what we want to be known for? Is that what our legacy was? Is that what our Chamor ancestors protected these beautiful, amazing islands to be? A training place for war? Because that's what's happening. That's what live-fire training range complexes with MPMG, multi-purpose machine gun range, HGs, hand grenades. We've got to read through these abbreviations and figure out what they mean. Is that who we want to be? When you look further at the other EIS, because this isn't the only EIS we have to read right now, we've got to read the EIS looking at the mid, we've got to read the upcoming EIS dealing with Poggin. And what is going on in Poggin and the rest of the Marianas? Bombs! We're bombing our islands, we're bombing the ocean. What does that mean for our people? Who do we want to be? I really am glad to know that you're working with the CNMI, because we need to think of our islands as one again. We need to look at, how do we exist as a Marianas without having to rely on war to be able to feed our people? That makes no sense to me. We have to explore other options, other economic options. I do not support the buildup. I have never supported the buildup, because I believe we are much more than that, and we can do much more than that. And I'm calling on you as my leaders to be creative, to be bold, because a lot is at stake. Our future is at stake. At the end of the day, I'm going to end where I started. We didn't have a say in this. We may feel like we do, because we get to leave these comments, we get all these special briefings from these people in uniform, but they will decide what they will decide. We saw that. We've seen that time and time and again. This is an issue of sovereignty. Until we are willing, as a people, to truly look at what we want for our future, we will have no say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leongoro, for your comments this evening. Speaker Wapin? Anyone? Senator Duenas?
I want to preface this question by saying I think this is important to have information exchanged, and I think you had a very passionate presentation. I just think that we have to ask questions so that there's balance provided, and I want to understand your perspective. I agree with you when you speak of our islands not being and shouldn't be a place or station for war. I guess my question would be, is there a place and a station for defense?
Well, what makes Guam a place that needs to be defended? I'll ask you that.
I think our regional location, yeah.
Okay. I'm a person of dialogue as well.
We can dialogue offline.
So I think that the largest threat to who we are as a people and our defense is So I think that the largest threat to who we are as a people and our defense has been the US's presence here, right? So the reason we were attacked during World War II wasn't because of us as Chamor people, it was because of the larger world, you know, because of the world war. And who were the players in that? Japan and the US. Japan was attacking the US, not the people of Guam, right? And so if we look at where we are today, and this has come up many times, the more, the greater the military presence on our island, the bigger the target we are. So I don't feel safer when there's more military here. I actually worry that that makes us the closest, biggest base to some of the US's biggest enemies right now. That doesn't make me feel safe. If we were to be in a position where we were negotiating what presence, if at all, a military would have here, that would be very different. But we're not in that position. And so therefore, the larger and larger the military presence, the more unsafe I feel for myself and for my children. And we have to look at what safety is and what defense is, right? Do we fear constantly the threat of an imposing attack from another country? Or do we face the fact that since the military has been here, our people, the number of cancer that has been killing our people, the number of non-communicable diseases directly impacted with our dependence on this lifestyle have been killing our people? Those things also deal with our security. So when you talk about defense, I mean, we've got to begin to ask those larger questions. Why do we need to have such a large defense to begin with?
Thank you for your perspective, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Duenes. Any other questions for Ms. Leon-Grohl? If not, thank you, Ms. Leon-Grohl, again for your presentation this evening. If I can ask, the Guahan Coalition for Peace and Justice, please identify yourself.
My name is Lisa Baza, and I will be presenting this evening briefly on behalf of Guahan Coalition, Dr. Nativeda Des Malangu. So the two issues that I've been asked to address are like the two largest issues, and I'm just going to do a very surface review, and we'll be submitting our comments more comprehensively as outlined. So the two issues would be the five live-firing training ranges and the hand grenade range in Anderson South. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of what Leven says, but in terms of impacts, again, I'm just going to go down the line, okay? Number one, in terms of potential for water toxicity, as indicated in the 2010 EIS, there are project areas that overlie Finagazan and Agafagumas, the sub-basin areas that are used for source, drinking water sources. Secondly, in terms of the effects on the nearshore water, according to this EIS, there are significant impacts, and we actually agree with them. The hand grenade range project area would be located like .2 miles and 1.3 miles from the nearshore water. So you just take a look at that for a second. In terms of noise that Leven brought up also, in this EIS, it was significant. The impact of noise is extremely significant. What the military had talked about in this particular EIS, they talked about day-night tactical maneuvers, minimizing night maneuvers as a form of mitigating factors, like nothing beyond 10:00 PM, et cetera. And they claim that the impact will not affect one's hearing or ability to focus, and I'm not going to cover the psychological perspective of that, but that's very inaccurate. Nonetheless, there will be significant impact to noise regardless of where this site is located. Impact on recreation, maritime traffic, visitor enjoyment, it's not stating significant, but that is significant. Although the draft SEIS excludes Paget, access to Paget Point, the cultural site, will no longer be accessible, okay? Also, the restricted areas to dive spots, fishing zones, and snorkeling areas also will be no longer accessible. It will lessen visitor enjoyment, contrary to what this EIS states, okay? In terms of the impact on ocean life, man, that's going to take a while. And again, we're going to submit something more comprehensive in writing, but the impact on ocean life is substantial regardless of what is stated in this particular draft SEIS. Approximately 2,805 acres of the Pacific Ocean off the southeast coast of Guam will be affected, okay? The impact on water wells, there are several water wells situated within Andi South that are immediately adjacent to the proposed Route 15 boundary, okay? Guam's freshwater aquifers are susceptible to contamination from surface activities, as Victoria had mentioned. These wells are located in Andi South. The impact on airborne toxicity with regard to exposure to airborne toxic dust related to the live-fire training activities and the range maintenance, of course, lead is a primary contaminant of concern in addition to some other contaminants that, again, we will identify more comprehensively. In closing, whether it's like 8,000 or 5,000 Marines, the environmental impacts continue to be significant, and the mitigation efforts are insufficient and in some cases inaccurate. Transferring from Paget to Retidian, if that's, if they think that's a better prospect on behalf of Guahan Coalition for Peace and Justice, we beg to defer, and we say, no, absolutely not. Thank you, Cizouas Mossi.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baza. Appreciate your testimony. Any questions from the panel, senators? Thank you again, Ms. Baza. The National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter, please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Good evening, Napa De. My name is Obita Perez. I'm the chapter manager for NASW Guam Chapter, and I was former president. And this is Lovell Delonsad. She's a senior social work student at the University of Guam. And we will be providing a brief, less condensed statement from the previous 30-page year in the past. Okay, just a little background information. The National Association of Social Workers is the largest membership organization of the professional social workers in the world with over 150 members. NASW works to enhance the professional growth and development of its members, to create and maintain professional standards, and to advance social policies as what we're doing today. The Guam Chapter of NASW was established in 1999 and has been a voice in advocating for social and economic justice in Guam, as well as for the general human rights of all people living on the island. Social workers have consistently advocated for a just and peaceful world. Social justice is central to the profession's values and specifically emphasized in the NASW Code of Ethics, as social work professionals are instructed to promote policies that safeguard the rights of and confirm equity and social justice for all people. Social workers are similarly encouraged to learn other languages, become informed about all aspects of other cultures, and apply the profession's values to work with clients of all races, ethnicities, and sexual orientations. Key aspects of promoting peace and social justice and topics of concern to NASW are the prevention of human trafficking, poverty alleviation, and prevention of torture. Social justice is inherent in efforts to create a peaceful world, whether in our own families and neighborhoods or globally. In 2006, the United States entered into a bilateral agreement addressing US military activities in Japan. As part of this agreement, it was revealed that 8,600 US Marines will be transferred from Okinawa to Guam by 2014. In the SEIS, this number has been reduced to just under 5,000 combat troops. Nonetheless, this number will be coupled with dependents and support personnel to total about 10,000 people. Given that Guam's current population is approximately 1,000, I mean, 160,000 people, this computes to about 6.25% population increase. This kind of population growth in a short period of time will have serious consequences for our island's frail social services system. The recent release of the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, SEIS, has raised numerous concerns about how the relocation plan is designed, and more specifically, how it will impact the lives of people living outside of the military footprint. The National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter is gravely concerned about the impact of the Guam and CNMI military relocation plans' impact on general services on our island. The impact on general services, general human services. In consultation with various human services organizations throughout the island, upon the release of the draft environmental impact statement, DEIS, in September, I mean, in November of 2009, it was clear that programmatic operation should be significantly impacted by the post-military actions. Human service organizations include both government and non-governmental sectors. More specifically, government concerns include the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Department of Youth Affairs, and the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. Likewise, our island's non-governmental organizations, the NGO sector, will also be impacted. Organizations such as Sanctuary, Oasis, Victims Advocates Regional, Guam Legal Services, and the Salvation Lighthouse Recovery Center, who provide vital social services in our community, also stand to be impacted. The SEIS does not sufficiently address concerns impacting human service organizations, nor does it propose any mitigation measures to address areas of impact. A major point of contention in the SEIS that is not specifically addressed in the document is determining whose burden is it to pay for infrastructural upgrades to Guam's human services organizations. It is widely known, as reported in the media, that Guam's social service spectrum barely meets the needs of our local community. In consideration of the major population influx that is projected in the SEIS, it is indisputable that Guam's social service network cannot accommodate, cannot accommodate such an influx. The following discusses the current state of several of Guam's governmental social service agencies, as well as points of clarification and suggestion in an effort to mitigate significant impact in our community.
Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, or GBHWC. The GBHWC provides inpatient, outpatient, and residential services for those suffering from mental illness or substance abuse problems, and for children with serious emotional disturbances. Complex cases are sent off-island for specialized treatment, not provided locally for adults and children. The past DEIS stated, "According to an Okinawan activist group, an estimated of 7,000 Filipinas today serve as prostitutes on entertainment visas for US military personnel in Okinawan, even though prostitution is illegal in Japan. Since Guam's adult entertainment industry is nowhere near the size, will Guam have a repeat of what happened in the history of US military presence in Okinawa, where arguments of justice and jurisdiction surround hundreds of allegations of sexual crimes that have been reported through the years? The DEIS stated that from 1945 to 1950, 278 rapes by US servicemen were reported, and in addition of 200 rapes by US military personnel were reported between 1972 and 1997. If this happens in our community, who will pay for services to resolve trauma to these women that includes therapy, other mental health services, and drug and alcohol treatment? As you know, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center has gone through its struggles in meeting the needs of Guam's community. There should be an increase of funding for Guam agencies and nonprofit organizations by the Department of Defense so that there will be an adequate service available to provide for local and military dependents without the burden of being entirely on the government of Guam to ensure the safety of the island. According to a presentation held at the legislature on February 4, 2010, Dr. Andrea Letheiser, a clinical administrator for Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, reported that in the area of substance abuse, 20% of their client are from the military. Before the proposed buildup can occur, military commands must sign and put in place a memorandum of understanding addressing the payment structure and services to provide by government of Guam agencies to military personnel and other persons associated with this buildup. Gov-Guam should be asking, what additional federal sources of funding can be provided to support such services? Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, or GMHA. The hospital currently has a bed capacity of 208 and with 159 beds designated for acute care. The social service supervisor at GMHA reported that the hospital is at 100% capacity for over three weeks out of the month in all adult wards. It is not uncommon for the media to report patients in the hallways of GMHA waiting for the availability of a room. Further, the lack of specialty care available on the island adds another level of complexity, necessitating the transfer of patients to medical treatment centers in places such as Philippines and the US states of Hawaii and California. It is clear that without corresponding increases in bed spaces and other resources to the island's healthcare system, potentially, health and safety impacts could include a longer wait, response times for patients, fewer or no available providers on island for chronic or acute issues, complications for death from delayed treatment, and/or requirements for patients to travel off-island to receive adequate treatment. Our island population is approximately 160,000 with an estimated of 60,000 individuals who are uninsured or underinsured. Guam's federal matching funds for Medicaid is a lower rate than allowed to most other US states and territories at 50% the minimum rate. How will Gov-Guam come up with the money to pay for the exhaust cap if the minimum rate is not increased and the population is tripled within a shorter timeframe? Gov-Guam needs to ask, what can the US military do to ensure raising Medicaid and Medicare caps applicable to Guam? The proposed buildup should not occur until said caps are lifted. Further, in planning for a community response to projected rapes and other sexual crimes to be committed by US servicemen, who will pay for medical treatment of survivors of sexual assault, to include HIV and AIDS screening and treatment. Because the US Naval Hospital Guam is a state-of-the-art medical facility, it is recommended that all personnel related to the buildup, including non-military persons, their family members, and victims of their crimes, receive medical treatment and services at the US Naval Hospital Guam. If this recommendation is not achievable, then military commands must sign and put in place a memorandum of understanding addressing the payment structure and services to be provided by the government of Guam agencies before the transfer of troops to Guam. If all personnel related to the buildup, including non-military persons and their family members or personnel related, to receive services at the Guam Memorial Hospital, then all military contractors should provide full and adequate health insurance coverage for all employed workers so as to ensure that they are not added to the current population who are underinsured and uninsured on the island. The NASW Guam Chapter poses a question of whether jigpo or other decision-making military members have considered investing in the Guam Memorial Hospital or allowing the civilian community to access services at the US Naval Hospital Guam so as to share the resources in the area of healthcare beyond the borders of the military fences. This would constitute the two-spirit of Ina Famaulik by demonstrating a more reciprocal, mutually beneficial relationship between neighbors on the island. Department of Public and Mental Health and Social Services, or DPHSS, provides services in the area of primary care, environmental care, welfare and social services, and senior services. The agency oversees a provision of services to include northern, central, and southern community health centers providing primary care services. DPHSS is also responsible for the distribution of welfare benefits and program assistance to include MIP and Medicaid, licensing of childcare facilities and foster homes, protective services for children, senior citizens, and persons with disabilities. Administration of Health and Sanitary Certificates, Immunization, issuance of birth and death certificates, reporting communicable diseases, and other community support services. GdPHSS targets the most indigenous populations for healthcare. Thus, the majority of individuals accessing services are uninsured. It is noted that many individuals accessing services do have health insurance, but unaffordable copayments for services or medications, or missing coverage of specific services and medication, makes it necessary that these individuals to access the free services of public health. The population growth associated with the proposed action would contribute to these uninsured and underinsured populations. Caps in Medicaid and Medicare, as well as funding provided through HRSA and the Center of Disease Control, must be increased to provide services for the additional population projected. projected before the transfer of Marines and other buildup-related personnel. Thank you.
These are, these are our recommendations. While this statement barely skims the complexities of the issues related to the proposed Marines' relocation to Guam, the National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter offers the following recommendations. Number one, that a request for the extension of the comment period for the draft SEIS be extended by at least 30 days, for a total comment period of at least 90 days. This aims to, to increase the degree of community participation and affords much-needed time to review the DSEIS. So many acronyms. That the agency directors provide a short briefing sheet on the impact of the proposed Marine relocation plan to their respective agency services. This feedback from agencies will provide community members and stakeholders of this issue relevant information that only agency personnel are privy to, and that may be used as, as we respond to this plan. That the Guam Legislature, as in, as in the case of the DEIS in 2010, invite line agency to a similarly fashioned roundtable discussion to present and respond to questions about the proposed plan's impact on their services, and that their comments and discussion be transmitted to Jipco, and that all branches of the government of Guam hold Jipco and the U.S. Department of Defense accountable to responding to our concerns submitted in this commenting period. In the process, in the case of the 2009 DEIS, community concerns were not addressed in the final EIS, and ultimately, the record of decision was signed setting into motion the planned buildup. This was the case even after our community submitted approximately 10,000 comments that were described by General Byss as unprecedented in DoD history. Had it, had it not been for the lawsuit brought, brought against the Department of Defense, of which the Guam Historic Preservation Trust and We Are Guam were a part, thank you for that, we would not have had the opportunity for the SEIS and the reductions and configurations of the current plan. As leaders of Guam, the NASW Guam Chapter will call on you to lead us to this effort. Thank you, Sijos Mas.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez and Lavelle, for your testimony, your presentation this evening. Any questions or comments for the two individuals? If not, we'll proceed forward to the Social Work Student Alliance. Please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Hello. My name is Antonio Diaz, and I am the president-elect of the UOG Social Work Student Association. My classmates and I are here to advocate for truth and transparency from the Calvo administration, as well as the senators who oversee these affected committees in the legislature with regards to the SEIS. More information and support is needed for the government, from the government for residents to be able to comment, with facts known and the position our government holds in regards to impacted sectors. The general public, who have no idea how to decipher or interpret the data, is owed some sort of explanation from the government to educate them and explain what the data really says and what it really means to the people. As students, when we were going through the SEIS, just like the people here who have a lot more experience than we do, we did not know what we were looking at, and as we read line for line acronym for acronym, we had to call upon other people to pretty much explain to us what this meant. Because of that, we couldn't really take a position or stand as far as environmental rights, so what we decided to do was just ask for the government to explain to the people, the general public, what this document really means in regards to the agencies that they oversee. In doing so, then laymen more or less can be more involved and more proactive in trying to figure out how this buildup, anticipated buildup, can impact them in the future. Mr. Calvo was good, or he addressed our concern about agencies being able to provide some sort of feedback to the governor by the, I think the deadline was the 30th that she put out, and just like other members who were present today, we humbly ask that the government extend the deadline for commenting period, just so people such as myself and other residents can actually interpret the data, find out what it really means to them, have a roundtable discussion, figure out how they can move forward in, in promoting the issues, as well as being able to make sound and educated comments and feedback that will affect them for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz. I appreciate your testimony, your comments this evening. Any questions or comments for Mr. Diaz? Thank you again. If Fuetsan Famalawon beyond the fence? We have a representative from Fuetsan Famalawon? If not, we're going to proceed to Inashon Chamor.
Good evening, Honorable Senator Ogden, and the Oversight Chair of the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs, and Judiciary. First of all, I would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity and for your staff for allowing us to be on this table.
Dispensers on out. If you could just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Catherine McCullum. Catherine Flores McCullum. And I would also like to, giving, thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here by your, by your ad and, and information to the public. Although I'd like to, I, I would, I would, I'm hoping that you would continue allowing us to be here and inviting us to, to these meetings, if at all possible. I also would like to address Mr. Mark Calvo, because I have talked to him in the past, but I have yet to get a meeting with him and, from, from him to see the governor. The Inashon Chamor has been requesting the, his audience, and I have yet to hear from I am one of the heirs of Benigno LG and Dolores Martinez Flores, landowners to several properties at Retidian, and which we call in Chamor Litexen. My heart is heavy today with the knowledge that the surrounding areas of Detachment Five will be used as a firing range. Landowners in Aruna and possibly Hinapsen will be restricted from using their properties to their best use 36, 36 weeks out of the year. This is totally ludicrous. We met with Congresswoman Bernalio on March 5, 2014. The Retidian families had gotten together, we've been requesting a meeting with her, and, I'm sorry, it's April 5, 2014, and only to find out that she had introduced HR 4402 just a day before we spoke to her. No mention of this bill was told to us, only that she supported the land return of Retidian to us, and that she would like to see U.S. Fish and Wildlife removed from the area. She even supported introducing a Guam Lands Return Act of 2014. We left with the meeting feeling hopeful. Now we feel totally betrayed. I would like to remind the Congresswoman, all the senators, and the governor, Lieutenant Governor, that we do not work for you. You work for us. Where in this whole military buildup is the people of Guam considered? Why is it that we have to repeatedly remind you that it's definitely not in our favor? No firing range is good for us, or is conducive to our island. When you deny usage of property, you should compensate them regardless if you are not using the property for the entire year. 36 weeks out of the year is a dang long time. And that's called lease. And not, nothing in the DEIS is considered about leasing property, or telling people that they cannot go through, okay, we'll compensate you for this day. This is not a win-win, and never will be, because you will be destroying property, contaminating our ocean, drinking water, stopping farming, living, and promoting noise pollution. I had watched my father in Machinano, we just buried him a few weeks ago, behind the Santa Bernardino Church, and noticed the activities of explosion and the constant flying of helicopters and airplanes. I don't know how the school in that area manages to operate during those hours of the day, because they're just right next to the church. And 200, 300 feet away is the entrance to Detachment Five. Not only does it endanger the children's lives by flying over the school, but interrupts their concentration. The firing range will definitely endanger all who live in that area. The bottom line is we want the lands, our lands in Retidian returned, no firing range anywhere on our beautiful island, and the closure of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. I will refer to my cousin, Christopher Bihaedo.
Thank you, Ms. McCullum.
I'm right here.
Chris, just identify yourself, please.
Yes. All for day senators, my name is Christopher Bihaedo, and I'm here on behalf of my family, the Retidian families, and I have a written testimony here that, you know, I had to put down, right? Because it's very difficult when we talk about land issues and land rights and land ownerships and land return. So, you know, I felt, you know, I got to write these things down. So, this is my written testimony, and again, my name is Chris Flores Bihaedo, in opposition to the proposal of the Marine Corps live firing range complex at Northwest Field. And I am a second-generation descendant of a Retidian original landowner, Benigno Leonguerrero Flores and Dolores Martinez Flores. Our Flores family, or Familien Apu, have been laying claim to a parcel of land once owned by my grandfather and taken away in 1963, along with many other properties on Guam, as we know, at the time, under eminent domain. In 1993, the area known as Retidian was deemed excess, meaning it was not needed for military, military defense. It was deemed excess by the U.S. military, primarily the U.S. Navy, and based on a federal government protocol, the land was snatched up by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and turned into a wildlife refuge. At that time, our local government did nothing to assist the Retidian families to fight to regain these lands. It's too late to point fingers and blame the leaders at the time about the lack of support in trying to regain our lands and have them returned to the original landowners. Now, our family strongly opposes the proposal of the Marine Corps live firing range complex at the Northwest Field. We also oppose Congresswoman Bernalio's recent bill, HR 4402, the Guam Military Training and Readiness Act of 2014, which would quote, "authorize the Secretary of the Navy to establish a surface danger zone, or SDZ, over the Guam National Wildlife Refuge, or any portion thereof, to support the operation of a live-fire training range complex," end quote. As Kathy said, our family recently met with the Congresswoman on April 5, 2014, at a banquet room in the Outrigger Hotel. We walked out of that meeting with very positive feelings that the Retidian family's best interest would be something that she would keep in mind for future reference, but not a mention of that bill, which was proposed in Congress on April 4, the day before we met, was ever brought up in our meeting with the Congresswoman. There was a lot of talk about positive and positive, and we'll do this and do that. And I feel that, you know, when these bills are being proposed, why don't, why aren't these bills having public hearings if they're for the betterment of our island here on Guam? There's just bills proposed in Congress without even having a public hearing here on Guam. So I know there's some staff members here from Congresswoman's office, which I think should take note of this, and make sure that we are given proper notice about what kind of bills are being proposed in Congress for the betterment of our island. I'm a local businessman, and I would like to think that I'm successful at what I do. In business, I surround myself with people who can make rational.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bihaedo.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're trying to, you may proceed now.
All right. I am a local businessman, and I would like to think that I'm successful at what I do. In business, I surround myself with people who can make rational and competent decisions for the betterment of our business. Now, when I think of the federal government and the U.S. military in particular, I like to think that these military leaders are the best of the best when it comes to making decisions for the security of our nation's defense. Although, when you consider the decisions being made with regard to the firing range, I feel they are incompetent in finding the right location for the firing range. Of course, we don't want a firing range here on Guam, right? But basically, there is a proposal. So the initial proposal was to use a sacred and ancient village in the site of Poget, which of course was going to infringe on local lands, and for sure is going to get strong opposition from our local community. Now, this recent proposal uses military and federal lands on Northwest Field, but is directly aimed over the Retidian area and the wildlife refuge. I understand it is set back from the cliffside, but it still does not make sense to be shooting in the proximity of a site that has been deemed an area with endangered species, a turtle nesting site, and whatever other natural species the U.S. Fish and Wildlife is supposedly trying to protect. But that's another discussion we can talk about later. Why doesn't the U.S. military and the federal government stay within the confines of their bases, which is still our lands, of course, and use existing lands they currently have? I propose that the firing range utilize the current golf course on Anderson Air Force Base and face towards the eastern horizon. This would not infringe on any local property, even though we still think it's our land, and it is our land. And the big question is, does the U.S. military really need a golf course for the sake of national defense? All right? So I understand that our fa- our family's fight for the Retidian property is a very tough one. It's very tough for us the past couple of years. Like Kathy said, we're second generation here. We've already lost many, many first-generation descendants. We only have two remaining live first generation still alive right now, and, you know, they're, unfortunately, they're not able to be here with us. And so, you know, but please know that we will never stop fighting and bringing up the issues important to, to the return of our lands. Maybe these lands might not get returned in my lifetime, but I want my children to understand that the history of the wrong that has been done with regard to the occupation by the U.S. Navy, and now the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, needs to be righted. So again, in, in representation of the Retidian families and the Flores family, I strongly and we strongly oppose the proposal of the Marine Corps live firing range complex at Northwest Field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Bihaedo and Ms. McCullum. Any questions or comments, senators, for either of the two individuals? If not, I understand, Speaker Ben?
Just as a note, our office also recently became aware of the Congresswoman's bill, and we have written the chairman of the committee requesting that they extend the public testimony time period for the receipt of testimony. It's supposed to be due tomorrow, and that we've also insist, asked Congressman Kilili, who is a member of that committee, to also appeal on our behalf and the people of Guam, in addition, of course, to the Congresswoman, so that we can help her try to get additional timeframe for us to submit that testimony. So I just wanted to inform the Retidian landowners that we were in the dark, as well as you were, and when we discovered it, we actually began the process of trying to ensure that our position here on Guam will be heard with regards to this aspect. And it's very critical, because if you have that passed, it basically negates the EIS and the requirement for environmental impact statements, because all the secretary has to do is declare that it's necessary for national defense and so forth. So it, it really just negates all the work that's being done with regards to the firing range by that legislation, and that's unfair. And of course, it's not the intention of either the military, well, I guess it is, because I'm sure, you know, they requested that that be introduced by the Congresswoman, but it really is, to me, very critical, that that type of authority not be vested in the Secretary of the Navy, and that, that, that debate should occur within the DEIS and within the public comments available to the people of Guam.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglilo, for sharing that information, and thank you again for your testimony this evening. Dispensers, I'd like to ask Guam Masangonindo Guat, representation for, para Fuetsan Famalawon. We have a representative from Fuetsan Famalawon. Please, if you can utilize the mic.
Fuetsan Famalawon, Guat.
Good. Usapany mic, then, if you can identify yourself, please, and then proceed with your testimony.
Malikasti. Wasi Aburros.
Aburros? Are you representing Fuetsan Famalawon?
Fuetsan Famalawon, Sumorungan. Mungo? You, you don't want me, you don't want me to represent them?
I'm just trying, inquiring whether in fact you're representing Fuetsan.
Yes, sir.
Okay, please, please.
I come with three parts. I'm gonna tell you who I am. I'm gonna tell you who I am. I'm gonna tell you who they are, and I have a question for every one of you. First, I am part Samoro, part Tautamona, part-time citizen, and full-time colonize. Okay? I am supreme unto myself. I do not need your colonial permission to exist, nor shall you have any more of me. Tautamona blood flows within my bones, and I shall no longer ignore it. Being Samoro has led me to believe that my ancestral blood no longer have voice. Being Samoro engulf life of theatrical opera, that whatever been said, we to bend our knees to it. That's part one. Half a day, Senator Algon. Guayzao Tealu, and I'm glad to see you. Where you been? Where you been? Second part. What good has the U.S. done for Guam? We've been bullied with laws detrimental to our traditions. We've been denied our birthright to our lands, our children, our lives. Our island been polluted, toxin rearranged, our medicinal plants bulldozed, Orphanihi make Caligun with their helicopter blades, our turtle theirs, our birds wiped out, and our cockro into pussycats. Military brought in termites, snakes, million white flies, koki frog, and rhinocerous beetle. It is time for the U.S. to move out, so we can move on. U.S. is not capable to keep their word. They bully and treat our people as creatures that move on the ground and their properties as commodities. U.S. does not the world any good. They are dangerous, mean, and grabby. That's them. Okay, back to what good has the U.S. done for Guam? They take all they want without fair compensation. They steal our lands and pay no real estate taxes, not taxes of any kind. I ask you, this is the third part, all of you officials, you, the senators, and your Guamanian governor, I ask you, is your 33 pieces of silver worth it to hang us, us the Samoro, and us the residents of Guam here? I ask you, is your 33 pieces of silver worth it?
Thank you, Abaros. Thank you for your testimony this evening. And representing the Senator Hope Cristobal, dispensable, I said to you, (inaudible).
(Inaudible) we get to be last. Half a day, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. I am Hope Cristobal from Tamuning. I'm a proud Samoro. I was born on Guam, and I've lived most of my life on this island. I am a grandmother. I'm a farmer, and I am an elected district director in the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District. I am also a member of various NGOs that exist to promote social justice and human rights of the people of Guam. In soil and water conservation, we work in partnership with the University of Guam and in cooperation with all government of Guam agencies overseeing local and federal programs established to promote the conservation, the development, and the use of soil and water resources of Guam in order to control and prevent soil erosion and flooding and to improve agriculture, water management. I am very concerned about the development of agriculture in Guam, and I see that our own laws state that when lands are returned by the federal government, accessed, those lands are to be designated A-zone, which means agricultural. For agricultural development, we need to assure that the lands can be cleaned in order that they can be utilized for agricultural purposes in the future. In my social justice and human rights advocacy work in organizations such as Samoro Studies Association, we are concerned with the social-cultural issues related to the continued militarization of this small island community, our human right to self-determination and decolonization, the education of our community, of the various direct and cumulative effects of the military buildup and its adverse effects on our people's health and lives. It was just 10 days ago during Holy Week that the draft SEIS was released by the Department of Navy. This draft SEIS carries with it the military's plan that proposes to change our lives forever. And in reality, the 60-day comment period ends some six weeks from today. It is a crime, really, that for such tremendous impacts, the destruction and the degradation of our land and waters, our culture, our political dignity and self-determination rights, including the continued decimation of our own people through cancers, diabetes, heart disease, et cetera, we are given basically six weeks to respond. This government of Guam must act on behalf of the people to do everything that it can to protect us from the dangerous military activities happening today and our plan for our island. Our right to exist in our home island should not depend on these federal military procedures or deadlines from which the military has nothing to lose but everything to gain or profit from. I recall the chairwoman of the White House Council on Environmental Quality, Ms. Nancy Sutley's, comment four years ago in 2010, when the federal government was trying to identify and understand the current conditions on Guam and the potential impact of the military buildup and the relocation of military personnel to Guam. She stated that there is no question that the environmental conditions on Guam are not ideal for military buildup. And so I asked this question of the Department of Defense, the Department of the Navy, what has changed from 2010 to 2014 that makes this Guam militarization plan any safer or beneficial for the Samoro people whose very existence as a people relies on the clean and the safe environment in our islands? To me, in this draft SEIS, the draft SEIS deserves a thorough analysis. I believe that the legislature on behalf of the people of Guam has every reason to request for an extension of the deadline, perhaps another 60 to 90 days in order to responsibly address this militarization plan that since its inception over seven years ago has not addressed the contamination of formerly-used defense sites, military dump sites, and other recurring military impacts that adversely affect our lands and our people. It is incumbent on you, our senators, who represent the people of Guam, to call upon each government of Guam agency to publicly report their findings on this D.S.A.I.S. so that the people will know how and what they are doing to protect us and our lands. And an extension would definitely provide for that time to learn of their work as government agencies on behalf of the people. With respect, and I know that many of you have already seen the findings on crime, which was a paper that was done for the Supreme Court Justice, Robert Torres, which I was hoping he would share on May 1st. These findings on crime, I would like to take this opportunity because this hopefully is being televised and this still stands today. It was done by Dr. Lottz of Brown University. Findings on Crime, 2009. Criminologists have developed a set of robust research findings about demographic and other correlates of crime, both in general and in relations to particular types of crimes. Regarding criminal cases, the most significant finding is that crime is primarily committed by the young. Individuals between ages 15 and 24 constitute 53% of those arrested for all offenses, but they only account for 20% of the population as a whole. Criminal activity peaks near age 18. That's from the Bureau of Justice Statistics, 2003. Given that the in-migrating population to Guam can be expected to be significantly more youthful than the existing population, this factor should be controlled in any analysis. I understand that rather than the command, we will have the soldiers between 18 to 25 be relocated here instead. The relative youth of the expected new population of Guam will be the result of the influx of the Marines, whose average age is 25. 37% of the Marines are between ages 18 and 21. That's from the DOD, 2009 study. In addition, the somewhat older Marines will be bringing partners and children, some of whom will be in high-risk teen years as well. Additionally, an important question remains as to what the average age of in-migrating civilian workers will be, as a more youthful migrant population will add additional stress to the criminal court system. Another very prominent finding of criminologists is that males commit most crimes, with 77% of all crimes, 83% of violent crime, and 70% of property crime committed by men, from a study by Pastore and Maguire in 2003. In migrants to Guam, both military and civilian are expected to be much more often male than female. The Marines tend not to be female, even more so than the military as a whole. 94% of the Marines are male. That's from the DOD study in 2009. Crime is known to be higher among the relatively poor, by Mr. O., 2005. For this reason, if most new in-migrants to Guam come with a reasonably well-paying labor contract, either military or civilian, this could be predicted to lower the crime rate, as they would not, at least initially, contribute to poverty on Guam. However, any consideration of the effect of economic class on crime rates on Guam must examine changes in employment, wage, and poverty rates in existing civilian population, as well as the possibility that some in-migrating workers will remain on island after the initial construction. Boom. If the latter were to occur, the result could be depressed wages and employment rates on the island. Low wage rates on Guam already create high numbers of poor and working individuals. Longer-term expectations about the stability of the civilian labor market, the volatility of the job market for military-dependent work, and the resulting poverty rate should be considered. Crime is more common where there are more significant levels of inequality in a community. Both property and violent crime are associated with high rates of inequality, with studies showing that homicide, in particular, is associated with high rates of inequality, studied by Messner, 2002, and Sun, 2007. Higher crime rates association with inequality results in part from the feelings of relative deprivation that it generates, as well as from the feelings of community insecurity that lead to greater enforcement efforts. The population growth in Guam will be associated with a greater gap between the well-off and less well-off. Projections considering this factor should consider the increasingly military-dependent economy, which could be more volatile and inequality-producing than the previous economy. Some forms of mental illness are associated with certain types of crime. As will be noted later on in this paper, partner violence and other forms of violence are correlated with post-traumatic stress disorder, a mental illness associated with both combat and crime victimization, studied by Taft et al., 2005. When analyzing crime rates, the likelihood that the existing population of Guam, military personnel, and veterans, as well as future in-migrants, will exhibit higher rates of PTSD as a result of continued tours of duty in war areas should be considered. Regarding marriage, crime rates are higher within single population, with marriage known to have an inhibiting effect on criminal activity, a study by Love and Sampson, 2003. While it is not yet known whether in-migrating civilians will tend to be more or less frequently married than the current population of Guam, the new Marines will be less likely to be married. Not controlling for age in this study. The marriage rate among enlisted Marines is 42.6% for the Air Force and the Navy. That percentage is 57.3% and 51.3%, respectively. And for the general population in the U.S., it is 51.9%. The marital status of the new population of Guam can be expected to be relatively low in both the in-migrating military and civilian populations. Regarding military work, one of the central questions is whether the military population will bring with it more crime. The crime rate will be affected either by more or less crime among the incoming military personnel or via indirect effects in which, for example, the rates of inequality increase because of the buildup, or unmarried workers are brought in to do construction, increasing the crime rate, or teenage children of military personnel engage in higher or lower rates of crime than the existing population mix. The question of whether the military population increase will increase crime rates is a reasonable one, given that the demographics of the military strongly resemble the key demographics of the criminal population. That is, the military is much younger, more often male, and exhibits more of a culture of hypermasculinity. Men make up 86% of the active-duty military, and the median age across the service is 28. For the Marines, those numbers are 94% male and an average of 25, as noted, Vaughn. By definition, however, the military worker has full-time employment and is not desperately poor, both of which factors as disincentives for criminal behavior, as previously noted. Some analysts have argued that the military has a general crime-reducing effect on its members, and that is for three reasons. First, it is a highly-monitored institution with crime, less likely to go undetected and therefore undeterred. Second, everyday life in the military is highly structured, which reduces the opportunity individuals have to commit crime, a study by Sun, Sung, and Chu in 2007. Third, the military is a full-employment organization with relatively small numbers of individuals at the lowest ranks who experience economic difficulties, and it can provide the context for reshaping life directions, a study by Elder in 1986. Other analysts argue conversely that at least some kinds of crime are more likely in the military than civilian populations because, first, military training brings with it emphasis on the use of violence to solve problems and an emphasis on forms of hypermasculinity that generate attempts to exert power and control over others, sometimes in criminal ways, a study by Burke in 2004 and Rosen et al. in 2003. Second, it is known that combat generates PTSD, which then produces additionally higher rates of violent perpetrators, a study by Sun, Sung, and Chu in 2007, Brine, and Riggs in 1996. Combat also directly increases violent and unlawful or antisocial behavior stress, a study by Gimber and Booth in 1994, which affects post-combat social adjustment relevant to crimes, as well as family dysfunction. Criminological studies indicate that rates of certain types of crime are much higher in military populations, and particularly among those military personnel or veterans with PTSD. Those crimes include domestic violence and partner violence, a study by Byrne and Riggs in 1996, and Gerlach in 2004, Hayman and Naidic in 1999, Marshall, Penuzio, and Taft in 2005, and in sexual assaults, by Morris, 1996. While the Pentagon notes that 80% of rapes within the military are not reported, research conducted among female veterans indicates that 30% report having been sexually assaulted or raped by their colleagues in service, a study by Sadler in 2003, and also Murdoch in 2004. in two thousand and three, and also Murdoch in two thousand and four. The effects of rates of particular crimes can be large, with an estimated one-third of male veterans with PTSD reporting having engaged in partner violence within the previous year, a study by Jordan et al. in nineteen ninety-two. Veterans have been widely studied, and the general conclusion is that, quote, "military service and war experience have a tremendous effect on veterans' mental and physical health, their daily lives, and their relationships," a study by Sun et al. two thousand and seven. Vietnam veterans have higher rates of drug use and more significant arrest records than met civilian populations, a study by Wright, Carter, and Cullen, two thousand and five. When analyzing crime levels, the impact of wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, and increasing levels of PTSD in those deployed to Guam now and in the future should be considered. Crime is both an individual behavior and a social act. That is, it occurs when a combination of opportunity, motive, and conducive social factors, for example, family disruption, economic downturns, prevailing ideas of masculinity, are in place. The importance of these social generators provides the contextual understanding of the problem of crime on Guam. Creating an understanding requires a description and analysis of the island's specific historical situation. Politically, Guam is a territory of the United States. Culturally, Guam is distinctive from the mainland. U.S. military and civilian personnel who become residents of the island, particularly those who do so temporarily, are consequently less likely to see themselves as similar to or socially bonded with the local population. Although social distance, based on perceived racial and regional differences, is an issue in the military and high in in-migration communities in the fifty states as well, that social distance is wider in the residents both military and civilian have experienced. Given that crime is an interpersonal phenomenon, exploring military personnel and new civilian attitudes toward the local population is crucial for understanding the likelihood of victimization of locals by military personnel and vice versa, for that matter. Most of the U.S. military men and women who will be added to the population of Guam do not plan to become and will not become permanent members of the community, and particularly those who come on temporary shore leave from vessels. Some may feel entitled to take liberties with local conventions and laws as a result of the lack of permanent membership and commitment to the island. Shore leave for sailors and Marines is a notorious occasion for activities such as heavy alcohol consumption, drunk driving, sex industry consumption, and occasionally serious forms of assault, all of which are either illegal or correlated with illegal activities. Military families are young families, and they are families under stress and lacking broader familial supports. Divorce rates are correspondingly high even in peacetime. It is a robust finding that divorces in military families have surged after each of the last major wars of the U.S., a study by Gimble and Booth in nineteen ninety-four. Recent reports suggest a sharp increase in divorce filings in military families as a result of the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, a study by Alvarez, two thousand and seven. Moving violations, traffic violations, including the most serious infractions such as speeding and DUI, occur at much higher rates among males and among young drivers, a study by Swartz, two thousand and seven, and Massey et al. in nineteen ninety-seven. Given that DUI arrests are more common than those for almost any other type of crime, and given that DUI-caused deaths are about as frequent as homicides in any particular year, a study by Swartz, two thousand and eight, this is an extremely important factor to consider in projecting future crime rates on Guam. Young men, as noted, will be far overrepresented in the in migrating military population and likely in the in migrating civilian population as well. I'm happy to share those statistics, but also I did want to call attention to H.R. four four oh two, which I think Senators, you, it's incumbent on you as a representative of the people of Guam to really call on the Congresswoman. She's a U.S.-paid Congresswoman, and her action is irresponsible. It's illegal. It's illegal to stop short the process, the NIPA process. You have a national law that requires an SEIS, and then she introduces this. This is an illegal act by the Congresswoman, and she needs to be called on it, and I believe it is time for her to step down, because we can see that in her actions, she feels no accountability for the destruction and the damage that such military buildup will no doubt bring to our people. Thank you, and Sisus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Senator Cristobal. Just for the information of everyone here, there is a representative from the Congresswoman's office here, and he will be taking these comments and these notes back to the Congresswoman. Any questions or comments for Senator Cristobal? If not, Senator Sanchez, thank you very much for your patience and for joining us. Please identify yourself with the record.
Buenas, Senators. Guajosy Simon Sanchez, Chairman of the Consolidated Commission on Utilities. It's the commission charged to run the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Works Authority. We represent the community. We are elected to run this board, and the ratepayers of Guam are the owners of the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Works Authority. We serve as their governing board. Thank you for the opportunity to participate with the other interest groups here tonight. It's always enlightening to come here and to listen to the various concerns that are being expressed. I will try as best I can to briefly summarize the initial evaluation, and it's very initial, as you pointed out, we just got it, and we're starting to look at it now. But I just, as perhaps a little reminder, in the first buildup, our whole approach always began with the idea that the federal government and the Department of Defense needed to make sure that they were responsible enough to pay for their direct and their indirect impacts. And what really emerged during the first buildup, because of its magnitude, it was so big, and it was so enormous. I mean, there was just huge impacts on population growth, and I mean, it was just, you know, bringing in Dedito in seven years, and, you know, just plopping it up there, up in Finnegan and so, and elsewhere. So it had a huge impact. We were very fortunate in our areas of negotiation, and I cannot say that other parts of our government were as fortunate, but we were very fortunate. When we started the discussion, first with the direct and the indirect impacts, we actually started about the construction phase, talking about the construction phase. To have actually thirty thousand workers here, which was a huge population search just to build this new base, had major impacts, water, wastewater, power, at least in the areas we looked at, and clearly in all the areas that you have to work at, look at. And so that became a concern with us. We were fortunate in that the nature of that buildup, which I think has changed a little bit, there was a lot more money being thrown around. You know, that was good that there was a lot more money being thrown around, but everyone was nervous about the size of the buildup nonetheless. We were successful in obtaining about five hundred and sixty million dollars worth of appropriations from Japan that were part of their seven hundred and sixty million dollar contribution for the first buildup. So GPA and GWA, we're going to get eighty percent of this impact money. The original money, they originally were going to build their own power station, and they were going to build their own water, or they can already access their own water, that was alluded to earlier by an earlier speaker, and they were thinking of building their own wastewater plant. And we told them, we don't think that was the best solution for the community. We already provide all the power on Guam. And Anderson Air Force Base, which was the only significant presence, and Niktams, which had downsized by then, they were already sending their wastewater to GWA. And we said, because of the northern aquifer, because it's seventy percent of the water available on Guam, that our only non-negotiable position was, there can only be one wastewater treatment plant over the northern aquifer. And that, you know, we can argue as to why it was put there, and primarily was put there because the biggest villages are up there that need wastewater services. But nonetheless, we have a wastewater treatment plant over the northern aquifer, and we have large population presence, as we all know, over that northern aquifer. And we just said, you want to minimize the number of wastewater treatment plants on Guam to only what you need, and we don't want any more over the northern aquifer, which was, that position was designed specifically to prevent them from building another wastewater plant over the aquifer. It's bad enough ours is there, we need to watch it, watch it carefully, we need to mitigate all impacts that might arise from, whether it's the military population or Guam's population growth, particularly in the north, we need to protect that aquifer. That is, the reason we have been here for thousands of years begins with that aquifer. And our ability to be here the next four thousand years will depend on our ability to manage and protect that aquifer. And to their credit, they agreed. They agreed that it didn't make sense for them to build a separate wastewater treatment plant for the marine base, that instead they would give the wastewater, the wastewater that they create, to the northern wastewater treatment plant, and they would help pay to expand its size because of the capacity that they were going to produce, five, six million gallons a day of wastewater, and they would take an extra step. Because of the Department of Defense, nowhere else can discharge into a non-secondary treatment facility, they offered to pay to take the northern wastewater treatment plant to secondary treatment, because that would allow them to comply with their mandate that they can only discharge into secondary treatment facilities. Then we brought up the fact that, well, during the construction phase, you've got thirty thousand people here. They're not all living in Dedito. They're going to live in Timooning, they're going to live in Baragada, they're going to live in Mengeelau. I mean, we didn't, it was, you could make a pretty good case of construction housing, where were you going to house thirty thousand construction workers? I mean, you could argue, probably wasn't going to be too much in the south, because it was such a far drive to commute, you know, that historically, construction companies put their workers near the work, right? They don't put them down in Melissa, they put them in Harmon, they put them in Central Guam. So we successfully negotiated with them that, because of the construction impacts affecting central Guam, you need to also deal with the again your wastewater treatment plant. And to their credit, they said, okay, we'll upgrade that too. And they were going to pay for moving both plants to secondary treatment. Just want to correct one, an earlier statement that was made. The movement to secondary treatment had nothing to do with the buildup. The movement to secondary treatment was a decision primarily fueled by the Obama administration, in which there's fifteen, twenty exemptions to having to treat your wastewater at this higher level of secondary treatment. Alaska, Guam, American Samoa, Honolulu, San Diego, Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, a couple other coastal or island communities far away from continental United States. But we are the last of the Mohicans. None of us are being allowed to get, to have the waiver from secondary treatment. We've had a waiver since the eighties. That's all being changed. They're making everyone go to secondary treatment. Hawaii's now going to have to, Honolulu's going to have to get its last two plants there by, in, within twenty-five years. We're now just starting a discussion with EPA as to the timeline for secondary treatment. But back in the original buildup, because of our discussions with DOD, they were willing to contribute about four hundred million to the wastewater solutions that haven't impacted the people of Guam, because if the military doesn't pay for secondary treatment, then we have to pay for it. And to give you a good example, Honolulu has to pay for secondary treatment, they have twenty-five years to get it, and the military in Honolulu are just paying their fair share as a customer, but they're not paying any special impact. In Build Up One, we were able to convince the military that your impact, and the best use of your impact money, would be to pay for something that would otherwise be paid for by the people of Guam, and to address the real impact that you're causing when you have thirty thousand construction workers and a base the size of Conneoe and a Half put up at Niktams. On the power side, they also agreed to pay to connect the new base and any other contonment or facilities that they would build for Build Up One. They would pay to connect it to the power grid. There was no need for capacity. We have, as you know, we have plenty of power capacity. In fact, our issue now is we have too much power capacity, and we're going to start retiring some of these units, so we don't have to keep maintaining them. But they agreed that they would not only connect the base to the grid, they also were willing to pay to, you know, we have backup generators, diesel generators, they call them the fast trackers, we put them in in the nineties to help with load shedding and those issues. They were in need of rehabilitation. The military said, not only will we pay to connect our base, we will provide funding to rehab the backup generators, as another way that they thought they could contribute. So at least on the utility side, in just this narrow area, I'm not speaking, I believe there's some success at the port, and there's some discussion with the roads, but at least in the areas that we were directly responsible for, we had great success in working with DOD to negotiate an impact, the equivalent of an impact fee, to pay for the impact that they would create on the water and wastewater system and to mitigate that impact. As we all know, that Build Up One failed to take fruit. We literally had an appropriation in the diet. It was sad to be there in March and watch it. You know, there are fiscal years, April one, it was very sad to see that appropriation just disappear, because it would have helped the community. But having said that, there was one other very, very good contribution, in our view, that came out of Build Up One. Since two thousand and ten, the U.S. Geological Service, the University of Guam and Weary, U.S. EPA Guam EPA, and GWA, and the Department of Defense, using monies that have been ninety-five percent provided by the Department of Defense or the federal government, have been conducting an analysis and study of the northern aquifer. It's an excellent piece, it's properly situated in which the University of Guam Water Energy Research Institute plays the leading local role. You know, they're the ones, as Dr. Underwood likes to say, the university tries not to take a position, it just presents the information. And we got very excited about their recognition and their acknowledgement that if we don't protect that aquifer, we're all in trouble. And in reference to a comment that someone said earlier, we pointed out and agreed, the aquifer knows no fence lines. If you have pollution on our side of the aquifer, you're going to have pollution on their side of the aquifer, and vice versa. So it is in the interest of the entire community to protect that aquifer and to make resources available to study that aquifer. And those resources have been made available, over three million dollars, study's ongoing, different contributions are, continue to occur from the federal government, even from UOG and from GWA, to continue to sustain the study. And there's more work to be done, and we hope that as our discussions evolve with Build Up Two, some of the recommendations in the aquifer study will be funded, particularly monitoring wells. We know a lot about our aquifer now that we didn't know before, I can share for the community. The, right now, we only use about forty million gallons a day. We used to think it was sixty or eighty, it's actually closer to forty. And we thought the aquifer was sixty million gallons a day, it's closer to eighty million gallons a day, and arguably, it's more than eighty million gallons a day. So at least at first blush, Guam has significant opportunity to grow its population, because there's enough water. We could have handled Build Up One, this much smaller buildup should not be a problem in terms of water resources. But the issue isn't for us, isn't whether this buildup will harm the aquifer. The issue is Guam's going to grow continuously, as it has, and we need a mechanism on Guam where the major players that currently touch our water are watching with great interest and consistency what's going on with that aquifer. And we think having U.S. Geological Service and the University of Guam being the leader, leading analytics, you know, is a good thing, because then it, we expect that this group will reconvene for this buildup and analyze the numbers. It's much smaller, it's about one-fifth the size of wastewater consumption, or one-fourth, same thing about water consumption. So that's good. It's going to take less out of the aquifer, it's going to create less wastewater, it's much smaller. That in and of itself, in and of itself is a good thing when you think of the aquifer. But our history shows that we grow, we're a very productive people, and we're very capable people. And our, our job is to make sure that this aquifer remains available to our children and grandchildren, for them to benefit from it, as we have. And we've seen the painful lessons in our sister islands of what happens when you blow up your aquifer, when you don't protect it. And we've been blessed with one of the best natural aquifers, natural resources in the world, and we all must be committed to protecting it. And it was probably the best thing that came out of the first buildup was that commitment. We actually signed a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Defense, putting that aquifer at center stage, that that needs to be protected at all costs, and that no development can compromise the ability of the aquifer to survive. compromise the ability of the aquifer to survive. Now, as long as the good Lord keeps raining, you know, we have healthy rainfalls here and we have a wonderful limestone aquifer, so you can see the studies, we recapture 40 to 60% of the rainfall and put it back in the aquifer. So as long as we don't overpump pulling it out and the good Lord keeps raining to refill it, and you, you watch, you know, you retire wells as they, as they tend to wear out or the salinity levels begin to increase, you retire that well. We found where all the sweet spots are for the aquifer, better places to harvest. Frankly, most of them are on the military side and not on the civilian side. So, but again, we take the approach that the good Lord owns that aquifer, he's just allowing the rest of us to use it, and we're in it together. And you can't think of that aquifer as anything else but Guam's aquifer, of which we are just the temporary tenants trying to drink water from it and protect it so that it's available for the future. So with this buildup, I'm sure the, the Water Resource Group will continue to, to study this buildup. I can already see from some of the studies that were, they were doing last year and early this year, they, they had some of the similar numbers that ended up being in the SEIS, they had a feel for the volume that might be generated. But at least at first, at first glance, there's enough water for this buildup. And we've got a lot of information as to where you might put monitoring wells, where you might drill the next set of wells. We talked to them about sharing resources like storage tanks where even though the, the sweet spot of the aquifer is on the fence side of the military, what if we put the storage tank on the civilian side? To really demonstrate this, this handout handshake that we're, we're protecting this aquifer together, that it's not just our side of the aquifer, your side of the aquifer, it's just the aquifer. In the, in the years since 2010 till now, we also got some other good news. There was some concern then about what they call groundwater under the direct influence. Unfortunately, our development history has led to a situation where in most of developed Guam, there aren't sewer, sewer systems and sewer lines. Only half of GWA's customers actually have sewers. They are, everyone else is on septic tanks. Most of us grew up, that's what my mom and dad had, and it's what I had in my first house in Jigo, and that's what I have in my house in Timooning, and, you know, there weren't a lot of sewer collection lines at the time. Development didn't work the way it did, it does now. There was no requirement, as there is now, that if you develop a new property, you've got to put in a sewer line. Because we want all future development to go to a sewer treatment plan. We don't want to risk putting more septic tanks over the aquifer. Because of the number of septic tanks over the aquifer, this issue of groundwater under the direct influence, they call it GWUDI, GWUDI, G-W-U-D-I. I mean, we need a new acronym like we need a hole in the head, but that's what, that was called, GWUDI. There was an ongoing study for three or four years, but US EPA finally agreed that based on all the analysis, that our water aquifer, our aquifer is not currently threatened by any direct influence of surface contamination. We've got to get all new development to stay on a sewer system. There is a local law that does require those of you that are near, near a collection line to hook up. That, that law unfortunately has been difficult to enforce because if you're like my mother and you say, Mom, there's an hour sewer line down the street that wasn't there 40 years ago, do you have $15,000 to connect to it? You know, we, we've chosen really not to, not to enforce that law on existing development. It's sort of like grandfathering you because we, just when we just started to look at who was impacted, it was huge amounts of people with a huge bill that they, I mean, and the losses if they don't pay you, turn off their water. And we just said, okay, that's, now we're going to poke you in the eye and then we're going to punch you in the nose. I mean, I just, so we, we want to be very cautious because of the fact that we have so many septic tanks. But at least going forward, every new development is required to put in, at least if you're less than a half acre lot, you're required to put in sewage, and that's all going to a sewage treatment plant now. So with this, with this buildup, the, they, they've announced that there is maybe $105 million that could be made available, and this is for water and wastewater projects. We had a visit from some federal officials connected with the Department of Defense, Office of Economic Adjustment, OEA, and they came here to brief the governor and I think they met with the speaker and others on, on the latest goings on with this buildup. The Congress has made available an appropriation and an authorization to spend about $118 million, about 106 is for GWA and 12 million I think is for the depository that they're talking about. That actually finally cleared the Congress. You know, it had always been in Obama's, President Obama's budget bill, always cut in the Congress. This, this small piece of dollars directly aimed at Guam as opposed to the military on Guam, actually cleared the Congress. And we had our first meetings on the possibility of how to spend that. We will be meeting with federal officials in the next few weeks to flesh this out in more detail. The preliminary conversation talked about them paying for secondary treatment for northern. So we'll, we'll look at that. We told them that you've got to pay for the whole thing. If 106 million doesn't cover it, we can't do, we can't do 80% secondary treatment. You either, if you're going to pay for it, you, you pay for all of it. The indications were they felt more funding would, would be available if, if the 106 wasn't enough. But we still haven't formalized this agreement. The letter of the law says water and wastewater projects. All I can share is in the initial conversation, we spent no time talking about water projects and all the time talking about upgrading northern to secondary treatment. This, of course, would relieve the people of Guam of that burden, which would be a wonderful contribution in our view, to pay for something that otherwise the rest of us have to pay for. And so that's on the table, we'll, we'll see where that, where that goes. The SEIS refers to it as well and pretty much implies that in their view, it should go to water, wastewater projects and it sounds like they, they want it to be targeted, the same solution they had for buildup one, at least, let's at least upgrade the northern wastewater treatment plant. Because if they don't pay for it, we will. And then the other, just the, because it's so much smaller, again, we have plenty of power, we'll just make them, they just need to pay for their direct impact. If there's an indirect impact during the construction phase that we're worried about, we'll bring that up. But we can't, we can't see one just because we're, we have plenty of capacity and the people of Guam are using less energy. So this actually kind of helps that they're going to consume more energy because we have some fixed costs that still need to be paid for, and the military's always paid their, their power bill. So we have enough power for the smaller buildup, we had enough for the, the first buildup. We'll just ask them to pay their direct impacts, see if we can convince them to invest in the backup generators that we still want to retain so that that serves everybody. We'll insist that they continue to pay direct and indirect impacts, and we want to talk about not only the 106 million, but any other impacts that may emerge as we do the analysis. So that's very broad brush, first glimpse of, of what we've seen so far.
Thank you very much, Senator Sanchez. Any questions or comments for Senator Sanchez? Speaker Ben? Or Speaker Wapen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, I hope that, yes, you will continue to take that same position that they will pay for the direct and indirect costs and whatever you had negotiated at the first time. However, $106 million, I know is, is what they said was authorized in the NDA. However, in the SEIS, it did say that they were not going to provide the funding, but they would assist in finding money. So if they, I mean, to assist rather than to make a, a commitment to pay, then as you said, if they don't pay, then we will.
The, the responsibility to go to secondary treatment is a community responsibility. It's, it's federal law. This, this opportunity has emerged only because Guam is one of the last few places that hasn't gone to secondary. Buildup one provided an opportunity for them to pay for both plants. It says here that they, they would assist GWA in locating the funding for the northern district wastewater treatment plant upgrades. I'm, I'm reading from executive summary, page 24. The NDAA directed the Secretary of Defense to convene the EAC, this Economic Adjustment Group that visited you. And at least from the, the words in the meeting and the words in the draft EIS, this new one, it seems pretty clear that the, there is an intention on the federal government's side to make the $106 million available for upgrading the northern wastewater treatment plant. We, we have not analyzed whether we want to spend the money elsewhere on, on different things. That's something we, we will do. We'll still want the University of Guam, Weary and USGS to study the water impact and confirm that we're okay. The, the studies that were done didn't acknowledge the nine to 11 wells that are being planned to be built and, and said that, you know, you can, the aquifer can sustain, can sustain that. GWA's building some wells as well. So the aquifer has life in it and it is very vibrant, and as long as it keeps raining, it should have a long life as long as we, we protect it. But there's plenty of room right now in terms of the amount of available daily yield and the amount of water we take out of it, that there's, there's quite a lot of water left. And, and so that, that's a good thing.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wapen. Any other questions, Speaker Ben?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Sanchez, one of the comments you made early on was the only non-negotiable thing on the table was that there should be only one sewer plant over the northern waterlands. And while I support that, I think that the other non-negotiable thing that should be on the table is that GWA should develop those nine wells. That GWA should be the producer of the water there and we should sell that water to the military rather than have the military pump that water, take it for free once again, and, you know, put us in a situation in which they control the water supply. You know, so I would suggest that in the second round, we pass the local law that says that the ground, groundwater and subterranean water belongs to the people of Guam, and we should control the development of that water and we should permit the, the development of that water. Now, I know that there's some issues related to that, but put it on the table and, and see where they go with it. And I think that I would suggest and certainly request, if not demand, that that be put on the table for discussion. And that if they want to build their own sewer treatment plant, so be it. But we should not be pumping our water and taking it for free. And so that's really my position on that issue. And, and again, it's, it's not a slam dunk, but we should fight that battle. And I think that I would, I would certainly hope that the commission would fight that battle on behalf of the people of Guam because we've done what we needed to do here in the legislature to at least give you some standing. You may get thrown out of court, but we should be in court if they don't want to do it. And, and I, so I suggest that during this round of buildup two, that that be put on the table as well for discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. And as you alluded to, and you and I have exchanged correspondence on this there, the Supreme Court has, has ruled that the Department of Defense can access its own water for the property that, upon which it sits. And that's what the senator is referring to. We, we would have to go to court, we would have to sue. It raises all the issues of political status and self-determination and, you know, being a colonial power without, without full participation. But unfortunately, that, there is a precedent, I don't want to mislead the community, that there isn't, there is substantial precedent that allows the Department of Defense specifically and the federal government in particular to access water resources in communities in which they have the property. We'll look at it again and we'll see if we can find a way to, to mitigate that, but I, I know the concern will be, the challenge will be finding someone in the Department of Defense or the federal government to say, you're right, let's give the entire, all the aquifer to the local control of the community. That will be our challenge.
Again, it will be just to give GWA, as the military has done with the power, to the right for the single agency to develop an integrated water system. Now, you know, again, that can be negotiated. They can decide who the contractor will be, but GWA should decide that the drills, the wells will be drilled, you will maintain ownership of that and, and have them work on, on buying the, the water from us. If the mechanics of, well, we don't think GWA is far enough along in terms of its capacity, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
No, I think the issue, Senator, is going to be if the best water well is seven miles into the Anderson Air Force Base, like one of the best well sites, are they going to say, I no longer own that property?
No, they're going to say, we're going to allow a well to be put there, we're going to allow a monitoring well to be put there, we're going to calibrate it, we're going to count the number of gallons you put out, and GWA, we're going to charge you, send you a bill for it.
Yeah, they, they've got no problem with monitoring wells, as you know. It's this ownership thing, and you pointed out GPA, but as you know, they made the conscious decision to say, we no longer want to make our own power, we want to buy it from the Guam Power Authority.
Well, let's make them come to that same conclusion on water.
Unfortunately, they have not done that. But, but yes, we will try. I mean, that's a valid point.
Thank you very much, Senators. Appreciate it, Senator Sanchez. Thank you again for joining us in the roundtable discussion. Mr. Otero, please, if you can identify yourself for the record and then proceed. I'd like to, I apologize, I'd like to invite anyone else in the, in the audience who would like to provide testimony as seats become vacant, if you can just quietly join us at the, the table. Mr. Otero.
First off, thank you for having this forum as it is important to get community input on this proposed military buildup, which will have a significant impact on our island, both positive and negative. My name is Pasqual Ertero. I'm a landowner in Aruna. Aruna actually is close to the Walleye Refuge. I'm about one of 100 landowners.
Do me a favor, Mr. Otero, Spencer, like, can you turn on the mic? Because for some odd reason, we're not hearing any.
I got it.
But we're still not, we're still not hearing you, the volume. Okay. This is massive.
Beginning, Senator.
Good for both.
It's working now, is it?
Check for talent.
I hope I don't break this one, too.
Much better. This is massive.
Buenas, Senator. First off, thank you for having this forum as it is important to get community input on this proposed military buildup, which will have significant impact on our island, both positive and negative. My name is Pasqual Ertero. I'm a landowner in Aruna. But before I continue, I want to make a comment on Vicky's remark. She's not here, but I mentioned to her, there were two things that reminded me about her remarks. First, she put an historical perspective, why Guam separated from the rest of the Mariana Island. Can you imagine the same thing happening to the Hawaiian island where the island of Oahu is a separate entity from the rest of the Hawaiian islands? We probably cannot imagine such a thing. The second thing is the military bombing range on the island of Kahole Lave, the smallest island in the Hawaiian island chain. In the seventies, the local Hawaiians put a stop on the bombing range because Kahole Lave is a sacred burial ground for the Hawaiian. There was also a bombing range in Puerto Rico, and again, the local people were also instrumental in stopping the bombing. So rather than stopping the bombing range years from now, we should not allow it in the first place to exist. Now, back to my comment. Our concern are twofold as a landowner. And first and foremost will be the, will, will the buildup restrict our access to our property? Second, will the noise from the rains and the contonment adversely, will adversely impact Aruna, which is Joan Hotel? The contonment is going to abut the Aruna property, and though I provided a comment in December 2010, this is the scoping comment period, to date, I have not received a response on my comment. But our greatest fear really is what, is that we wind up like the Castro family who had a day tour operation in their inapsin property located in Anderson Air Force Base near Taraguin. The military stopped them from conducting business even though they're paying their yearly property tax. The SEIS mentioned that Route 3A is the access to the five firing ranges. The ranges are called Life Fire Training Range Complex, as mentioned earlier, as the acronym goes by the acronym LFTRC. Route 3A is also the access to the Walleye Refuge in Aruna, and Route 3A belongs to them, to the military, though Gov. Guam is supposedly managing it now. The SEIS also mentioned that an entry control point will be erected to control access during the hours of operation of the firing range. The SEIS further mentioned the ranges will be in operation 273 days every year. Does that mean we can only access our property only 90 days of the year? If this is the case, then we're This is the beginning of Route 3A and we can access our property after going first to Anderson Main Gate to get a pass. That's at least six miles of additional distance we had to make to get to our property. There are currently five, at least five companies operating day tour operation in Aruna, bringing tourists from Tuman to the isolated and pristine beach of Aruna. They are primarily ecotourism. Again, mine is very short compared to Mr. Sanchez, but he's gone. Again, our greatest fear really is that we end up like the Castro family. So, that's our concern. What's going to happen to Route 3A? Is the military going to take full control of Route 3A and really restrict our access to our property? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Otero, for your presentation this evening. Only because they would like to provide a direct response, Mr. Otero and Senators, if we can use to Captain Odo. Captain Odo, if I can get you to, Captain Odo, I'm sorry, just for purposes of recording.
Captain Philold, Joint Guam Program Office. Just to be clear, the entry control point we're talking about in the draft SEIS is the one leading to the ranges up on the cliff line. It's a live fire training range complex. The surface danger zones do not fall on any of your property. Access to your property that you've been discussing here will not be restricted by DOD.
Where exactly is the entry control point, Captain, may I ask? Because if it's on Route 3A, I mean, that's the route that we take.
Yeah, but it's a new gate into the base over where the current Pacific Training Range spot is.
Sir, Major Alvarez, Jake Paul. Do you know where the water tank is that's in disuse right up on the top of the hill as you turn down?
Correct, I do.
There. Right where that gate is? There's a gate that's changed?
Is there any plan for the military to take back Route 3A from Gov Guam?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time?
There is not.
But once the buildup is done and the marine base is built?
There is no plan right now to take back that road.
Can somebody record that because?
It's in the SEIS, sir.
No, seriously.
It is in the draft SEIS.
Thank you, gentlemen. Captain Odo, Major Alvarez, thank you for providing that response. Mr. O, I believe you have a direct response from.
I guess we can sleep well at night now that we're not going to be restricted again.
Thank you very much for your inquiry. Senators, any questions for Mr. Otero or comments? If not, this is massive.
Thank you too.
We did have, she's walking right back in. Ms. Trini Torres, if you can just identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Buenos, han just todos. Hago lo que, Chairman, dan i todos, Senador. If you know tomorrow, se esti i keke di CD hafa, shea guine na efectus pare in epistimilitat. The militat imas donkulu imas men gut na na shon gini kita no. No kalan man di timue ne? Zata adu dura, zata zanashina ta. Guahu si Trini Torres. Haga sa o Chairman for the Independence Task Force for Guam. Este il elas tierna bumastao zor la intrega iman hobin. Zo shea gini o estina posisyon. Lo guahu maga haga. Gini maga haga o gini shon tomorrow. Veni in apes, pa' bu maga haga o gitotamona native rights. Para pay mumuji ito tauta, para lidia lotta, lila lotta esti tamu mumuji. Hanzo atang geno hulu saman makalanisa hit. Za ungan hanzo gumugod i kanai Estados Unidos. Then tarabirahan sagagi hanzo gi papa organic act. Za edzi organic act matu guizu. Tini gi Estados Unidos edzu. Zati malafan chau noi chamuru taguihi. Po fangentus pa' po fat fit ma mni afafa. Edza ma kumbi ma hola ka gohna si kalus taik talo mana gupu. Po gaigigi hi saman malitla tu pomananu. Ta zat chamuru gi somono po di CD hafa. Za fino chamuru guine. Baba li na li hanzo namengi hanzo ti tumungo man fino chamuru. Po se estanewan malilingo hit. Saman malilingo ifino ta. Kuntodus kum i ningeta. Za ifet sata na ni tauta. Ifet sata. To do man matelaka hit. Za ungan guha man manimbesti gitouta. Gi ma po shia gi storota. Lo hafa hit pa' bu. Man ma ki kilait petes kinsiga estino omopi i DEIS sa humuzo ni militat. Za just go along with it. Sa gi man ma fafa sinet. Za mangi zota self-determination. Na ti edgi ma simputati. Man ga gi gini i za lena i militat, i federat. Fan malagu gata za n epiho. Sa gi fafa sinanzu. Bente su fafa sinanzu opi. Pa' sinotro bati fafa sinanzu. Bezogia malago. Na ti guen, na ti edzu danu ku malanen timpa bu. Na ti edgi ku malanen timpa bu. Hanzo geno hulu tuak. Man malagu zupasenado. Ta lu, zamanka kampe nanzu. Pa' bu, ta mananzu manhuzo. Pa' s, fan malagu ta lu. Lo hanzo nai kun to di ku bet no. I koti, za hanzo ile legislature. I kalulut Estados Unidos hanzo. Ente segui. En e es gi. Za hanzo ku malanini sa ham pa' bu. Hunggan sa organic act for motma hanzo. Za mangi zota self-determination. Debida ta zo gui itzota plebiscite. Nata atzik isota istau politikat. Antis di patat zo gui sti itzoni militat. Samtungafa man monatsan hit. Ta zat decision mo pumpatinas. Anestanci egui sti man holo ni militat. Estama tutuli. Uno gi trespati itza Guam islata. Pa' bu ta lu mana lamike. Za guha hi fino ni hati man moosgi. Hasu zona tempui ma mensionai zi fishing wildlife, no, refuge, fishing wildlife. Na anima tarabira tapi i excess military land. Mana fan atzik i federal agencies. Fini ne na ni tano. Antis yu matarabira tapi tano gi government of Guam. Antis di matarabira gi zahita. Na it tapi. Za edzu naman holo ni fishing wildlife. Saman man atzik na inezo tano o sa bonito pa' Wildlife Refuge. Ti man manai dreñu. Ti man manai gi pa' bu man ahoho. Distehagas man ahoho. Hasu edzibidaniniya to do man madatagit. Za ilania itzoni regelason for ma baba hit. Za tita tetendi hafa ku milininiya zu. Za tita aatu hafa ma keke zugi zahita. Po se esti to de DEIS. Haga so zo gui sti SEIS, FIS, hafa malagomizo. Haga so kontra. Zaleko basta. Basta, basta. Ga gi gi interneto rofaleko. Atan esti haga kasama pegai gui. Na porasti ga gi umono ho pa' United Nations. Za kume hahu. Kume hahu utugu to do. Za debida ntingo itzoku major, masters, specialty, critical studies and cultural studies. Feradi otu feradi science. Za ma public scientist. Hunggan antin ntingo atan papa inanu H A I L E. T, highly. Zoli e. Ma ma ino se sintahune. Po no ma tumo hafa haga sinotro. Hanzo bula na sinan mido. Bula man gi elu hanzo. Loti man man hungian susani chamuru ni mido. Namang gi elu da man malapi man tomtom. Ke tuli papi edzu. I hinengi ni malainata. Saman malapi hanzo da man tomtom hanzo. Loti ente segui dai. Atu hafastibenaniniya Estados Unidos. Za ku ku man holo to di militat. Esta military buildup. Ta zai it. Ni afafa, ni self-determination, nothing. Haga su kumea, United Nations. Hunggan utugu esha report zonoi evidencia xa. Za ma tuli gua tugi Washington DC. Za ma sangoni. The United Nations Special Rapporteur on Indigenous Peoples' Rights. Este two months ago, ma quintusi sina motugata gi za hanzo. Put militarization, self-determination, impacts of colonization on our people, indigenous fishing rights. Sa to do esti ti nanayan. Samtungafa na ti nanayan. Man moano hanzo nai. Man moano hanzo. Man inalan hanzo namfanatu. Za edgi self-determination, na sinon tuli. Ku mutiun zo gui sti alok. Stay back, stand back. Enough is enough. Basta. Saman tauta han. Ga gi stekosan mido the United Nations and is on to Washington DC. Fan hasu fan hofen ente segui gitouta. Za ini nikotan ingegedan antin segui dinansi. Fanatu, za fan botparu lai. Enough is enough. Military, you pay up rent. If that's what we want, you get out. Just like they did in the Philippines. We don't want you. You get out. You're kicked out. You haven't committed yourself to your words. You're obligated to support us in our self-determination. No, they're not doing it. Who is Congress supposed to approve our self-determination? It's not Congress obligation. It's the whole United States. It's our obligation. It's neither of their obligations. It's our obligation as a people. Lo hanzo nai man ma kilanzu. Hasu fan temba be pasun mido. Zanititanus mido. Stop this exercise. We're playing around. We're playing around. Do their magic and we allow ourselves to do it. We can never do our self-determination. I want my freedom, my independence. I want our sovereignty back. Lo ahin geti. And I guess in past, it's the first Guam Commission that would discuss all of these aspects, war reparation, compact impact, immigration and so forth, but you never convened it. Never. Once we were called there just to introduce ourselves and that was it. We were not, never called again to meet. Nothing. Is that what we are? Is that how we are? We're afraid. Even if we're few, we can still stand up. Ko man midkot nai zi itouta ni man sinasadi. Pat man sin maga gwa si hurau. Ni pafanatu za mumuji itouta. Komos man ga itinwa. They got intelligence? Yes, they did. Because our people developed advanced technology, the flying thrower, the theory of aerodynamics that what? That's what makes the airplanes fly up there before any European countries even thought about it. And I'm a scientist. That's why nobody can disprove me on this fact. It's in the position paper for independence. Not a single person has ever come to disprove me otherwise because it's true. They took a sample, a model of the flying thrower to England and sailed down the River Thames and they were wondering, people from all over were wondering, "Why is it flying"? They couldn't. They couldn't tell. They could not identify the reason, how it could fly or why is it flying until much later in seventeen something, when they developed Bernoulli's Principle and it's the same principle, theory of aerodynamics. Fan man hasu fan, haga smastudia to di este zaskiulu to do. Then you have to navigate using the stars, the season, the weather, time and day without watch, without compass. Then you have to navigate. Fan man hasu fan, you can navigate yourself through this, through this military buildup. Sure you can. Who says you cannot? Are you going to believe that? You can navigate yourself through it. And all the US government responsible for all the atrocities they did to us, they start to pay war claims right after the war for only nine months. They pay our people and they didn't let everybody know. How could they? They destroyed a city.
Mr. Torres, Dispenser, like. Okay. Just stay with the.
Yes, I will. I am on self-determination, the freedom. You have to shut these people up. That's what I'm telling you. That is the main item and the only item you should be talking about. How to sail through, navigate yourself through this. You see here, the younger generation speaking up, doing all this research to prove to you, give you evidences that you should use to navigate yourself out. Put for board. You are colonizing us, yes. Get on with it. Straighten yourself out as tomorrow's. Saman lilingoilinga higi hanzo lo quit. We're lost forever. You allow that to happen, you will hold yourself responsible because you have the fingers that the US is using to colonize us to the end, to finish us off. Po se duus infan bene DC mon. Ente gaga go. Lon afatso tuti tanus mido. Zanipatut mido. Por favor. Upi paru pu pe sanon hanzo. Za to do stoli esta. Mangentus. Enten fafa sin kuston yafa. How's it going to impact our self-determination? Not a single person mentioned that. It wasn't in the military buildup from beginning to now. Never was. "Never was mentioned, never was discussed." "Chogifanitetsumidu." "Lomongama todi di colonizing threats to us." "And don't practice it on us." "Por favor." "Saina hu sta kinamzu." "Saina hu." "Do fa mta tamuda hu ufa inosentiu kadu." "Todaj teninoo." "Lo adu hamzun." "Haga sahodis di Africa." "Obis matotozo for United Nations." "You need to know that." "I was doing medical research in Africa." "You need to do that, to know that." "I worked for war vision." "To help." "The dying." "The helpless, sick." "Because they're dying of famine." "I did that." "When I came to my island." "I worked for Red Cross." "I went straight out to Boca." "To help the people who are homeless out there." "I saw none of you out there." "But I came, I left my house." "I went out there to help our people." "I need to know our people." "Because I was away for some time." "But you need to do the same also." "Por favor." "Nafan kaku rosonamzu." "Jen ekumo self determination masimputanti." "Ejgin seno." "Put it above all the papers." "That you have written so far on military buildup." "Put for board." "Chogui edzo."
This is Massey, Mr. Torres.
This is Massey.
This is Massey. Any questions or comments for Mr. Torres? If not, I'd like to recognize Vice Speaker Casper Bauer.
Sidus Massey. Still cold under here like it was years ago.
Howard, I'll go next, Howard. Go ahead, Mr. Torres.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to share our thoughts. And for those of you who have stayed with us the entire night. And I see one, two, three. I've served with four of you in the past and I appreciate that. For the record, I'm Larry Casper Bauer. A resident, landowner of the area along Route 3 for over forty years. Married to Carmen, who will be eighty years old next year. Who is very, very, very sick and tired of trying to fight and deal with this for all of these years. And we're very appreciative of the younger people coming here tonight and, and continue to look after this issue. We're the parents of thirty-two descendants. Five children, nineteen grand and almost eight great-grand. All Tamoros. And so of not being a Tamoro, I do have an obligation to be here on their behalf since they couldn't be here. And I appreciate this opportunity. I have just four points that I'd like to comment on and like Mike Canial, Mr. Arturo. Rather specific questions. And I'm not saying we see this like a tsunami coming. But if it does come, what will it mean to us? We who live along Route 3 have asked for a meeting. For somebody to tell us what the heck is going on and how is it going to affect our life along Route 3. The four and a half miles from Route 1, Marine Drive, where the new hospital is being built. To Potts Junction, where it connects to whatever it is, nine or nineteen or seventeen to Anderson Air Force Base. Or Route 3A to Aruna and Rattidian. Those of us on the four and a half miles. Over forty years ago, when I would jog and run on Route 3. One vehicle in a half hour, counting them going both ways. Now there's hundreds, hundreds in a half hour. Our quality of life has gone down considerably because of the increased traffic. And it is not going to be anything. It is nothing now compared to what I understand as mommy and I read the EIS draft. In fact, we have tried to explore ways to get away from our house. Right off of Route 3 on Arturo Drive and Meppa Street. If we have to get away from home in a hurry to come to Tamooning or somewhere else. And the best thing we can figure out now is to take Arturo Drive, turn right on Meppa Street. Go down to McSaisai and curve out on Isengsong Road. Head towards Dedito. Cut across Old CNH Poultry Farm. Make a right turn at the Quan's Corner there. And then left and head out towards Jigo and come out near the gymnasium. And then take Marine Drive through Dedito. Even though there's six streetlights there now. And only one, two, three now on Route 3. In the last few years, we've seen so many accidents. We've seen people killed. I helped take them out of the vehicles on Route 3. Between the entrance to NCS, Navcams, Nitams, whatever it's called these days. And Arturo Drive and the hill just coming up to Fern Terrace. That's now the entrance to Finnegan Elementary School. We have Ukuru High School down the road. And you folks have allowed to expand it to nineteen hundred from the twelve hundred we had before. And that traffic has increased also. The new hospital is coming in there. The school at Matsonanow. People coming up that way. It's going to be totally impossible for any kind of equality of life for those of us who have lived there and hope to have a peaceful life. The helicopters. For some reason, I associate helicopters with marine buildup. I once asked, "Why doesn't the helicopters that come from the south heading to Anderson?" "Stay over the military property?" Of course, it's obvious because they're noisy. So they cut out over our house, over Finnegan Elementary School, to take the short track route to Anderson Air Force Base. Instead of staying on the military side, going over military housing, over around Potts Junction and over the non-housing area. Our windows rattle now. But maybe we're too far from the landing strip at Anderson to have any kind of assistance to make the house more soundproof. I don't have any evidence from the EIS that the helicopter numbers and sound is going to be that much greater. But I haven't heard it's not. For the first ten, fifteen, twenty years of our marriage, my wife would wake up if she would hear a plane. Because she lived in the jungle of NCS during the war. And she heard the planes coming and the bombs and so on. When those helicopters go over, it still bothers her. Because she's not sure, the flashbacks. So that's the concern, one of the concerns of our quality of life and what this additional buildup is. I don't think any of you live on Route 3. I don't think any of you live in Jigo. Even over in that side, the Lucian side of Dedito. Let me tell you, it's not fun anymore and I don't think we're gonna get out. The hospital is gonna be, create a big enough bottleneck on Route 3. I had a note here on the firing range. In the earlier EIS draft reporting years ago. I suggested, in addition to the golf courses at Anderson, we now have private courses. But there's also Talagi. In fact, that's a great place. Some of you call it Taragi. It's got the cliff up. There's a lot of room up there. I don't think that recommendation went very far. And I don't know if anybody's addressing it. But that would resolve a lot of the concerns that have been raised about the northwest area. The firing range. The accidents already happening. The entrance to the school, the schools. It's, um... I haven't heard anybody talk about it. And I really think we need to. There's a mention in the EIS about widening Route 3. Several lanes in part and less lanes in another part. I didn't see any mention that it's all going to come from the military side along Route 3. All the power poles seem to be on our side, the private property side and the land trust side. But when they talk about widening the road, I don't see any reason why a road can't be widened only going one way instead of both ways, but that seems to be the discussion. I've seen surveyors surveying on my property, on our property. Without even knowing. We've called for a meeting in our area. And there's been no meeting for those of us who live along Route 3. We have to guess, we have to ask the people surveying. All they can tell us is they're doing what they were told by the survey company that's been hired to survey. On our property along Route 3. If you have people surveying your property, I think you probably want to know what's going on. The fuel line. There's two and a half miles of military property from the entrance to Nitams, NCS now, up to Potts Junction. Yet the fuel line is on our private property and on land trust property for those two and a half miles. I didn't see anything in the report about additional fuel lines being put in to provide fuel. Maybe I missed it and maybe Captain or others could tell me if I missed it. I understand that there's going to be a fuel line. It's probably in the process. I read about funding. I called Congressman Bredalio's office three times to get information on what is the plan for the fuel line. I have never received an answer. I assume you know, I hope you know, or I hope I can get that information. What's the plan for the fuel line? Why couldn't it be on the military side? It's taking private land. We pay tax on that land. It's our land. And it's land trust land. At least the two and a half miles from the entrance to NCS up to Potts Junction. It seems to me it would be more secure on that side since there is a fence. I am pleased to see that the current entrance to NCS, I hope I interpreted it right, or Nitams, is going to be closed. And that the McDonald's restaurant will be closed or bulldozed or eliminated. There's no reason why that McDonald's is on land taken from the Arturo family, laying idle for all those forty, fifty years. When it could have been on the private side, on our side, generating revenue for the local community instead of supplying whatever on base. It was never used and now it has a McDonald's restaurant on it. That gate has created more trouble. People making fish hook turns getting in and out of there, that, that restaurant. It should be closed now. There's been accidents there. It wasn't until three people were killed just between that restaurant and Arturo Drive that a streetlight got put up. And the road was widened a little bit there to accommodate it. And that's before the traffic has been as great as it is now. So I think those are my key points that I want to share with you on behalf of my wife and, and the family. We have the same concerns about access to Aruna. We've heard a lot of things in the past that were going to happen and also on Route 3. There is no access off of Route 3 into the private properties along the side. And if we want to have access, we have to go through the process to get approval to go over the fuel line. That's not right. We are landlocked on our own land behind a pipeline on our property, land that we pay tax on. These are specific concerns. Others have dealt with the general concerns. And if you could live on Route 3 and, and live there for over forty years as we have. I think you could appreciate what this is about. So those points, thank you for listening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity because I understand when we go to Ukuru or the other places, we're gonna get two minutes. Same old, same old. And then submit it in writing, which isn't that easy for some of us. So, thank you and thank you for listening and staying with us. Carmen is very tired of fighting this thing. Other older Tamoros are tired of it. And I hope that we can see some help along our road there. Make our life a little better instead of worse. The rattling of the helicopters over ourself instead of over the military base going around. The traffic for the school kids, the helicopters for the kids in school. Route 3 is gonna be a mess. And I thought it was quite interesting, quite a double standard. When we recently tried to get a, and received a clearing permit to clear some of our land in Aruna. We went, we would drive on 3A, pass the buildup that's going on on the military side already. And if you haven't been up there, there's been a lot of building, been, buildings been built on Northwest Field already. Tremendous amount of clearing. And I asked the EPA people and the Parks and Rec people. There was EPA people. Why is it that I have to, I can't burn anything that I do in Aruna from clearing? I have to be very careful how I clear. But when I drive up there, I see on the right side of the road a Northwest Field, a bulldozer's bulldozing hills. Huge piles of soil and trees and what have you, and then burning it. And I can't even burn a few branches down in Aruna from a little scraping and clearing. So it's clearly a double standard and I hope that we can believe there's no, not going to be any restriction as we had to before. To get clearance, to get to our own property in Aruna by going through security. It's, um... Some of us wonder if it's a tsunami, it's coming and what can you do to help us with this hearing tonight? What can you do to help us to affect this process? Sidus Massey, thank you.
Sidus Massey, Vice Speaker Casper Bauer. Any questions or comments for Mr. Casper?
Just one comment. The helicopters are in Baragada now too, Senator. I don't know what they're doing in Baragada, but we hear them almost every night. And it, it really, and, and you know, it's just, they're there, they fly through Baragada, they fly up to Chalampagu, they fly to Jonia. They hover over, they hover over the shoreline, the coastline. And then they stand there looking at me. So I don't know if they're looking for me, but I just don't understand what the military helicopters are doing in that part of the, the community. And we don't get any explanation.
And that's now.
That is now. That is now.
And thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Banglinen. Thank you, Vice Speaker Casper. Samson?
Hafde, Guam. Simagala himaganiti. Guam Intermediate Prime Minister of the Republic of the Senarii Archipelago. Uh, United States, you are illegally on Guam.
For what?
You are a receiver of stolen property. Go read your books, the treaties, and ask your government, "Why isn't the treaties honored here in Guam?" Why when it comes to Guam, there's nothing, zero. We get zero. Aren't you very, very lucky that the number one, you know, kid, ASS is on Guam for US? Because we're still in the same boat. We're nothing. We're a property of the United States of America. Where is equality? Where is democracy? Where is freedom? You guys, and you guys swore to uphold, protect and serve the Constitution of the United States of America. Where is equality? Where is democracy? Where is it? Your boss is not us, the people. Your boss is not us, the people. Your boss is three bosses, Secretary of Interior, as stated on the organic act, Department of Defense and Congress. So if they tell you to sit down and shut up, you're going to sit down and shut up and say, yes, sir? Right? Because you know that's your boss. Now, military buildup in Guam, wow, that's a big thing, huh? Because the people in Okinawa are saying Yankee go home. Because the United States military has no respect for the native people. They call them gooks. Just like the US military has no respect for the Indians. They almost genocided the Indians. You guys are US citizens, right? So, hey, it's election year, man. Can you pick me up to vote for two members to Congress and members into House of Representatives? Come on, man, let's get real here. Huh? US citizen. And here we are, military buildup. Well, you know something? This is a miracle actually, because they never bothered to ask the people of Guam prior to this latest military buildup because of Okinawa. Now they're asking, now we have an input now, but are they going to listen to your input or to mine or anybody else's input? And aren't you all pro-military buildup in the first place? The Calvo administration admitted it, Bredalio admitted it. I mean, she's even making a law suggesting to Congress to bypass everything and just go ahead and do it. Wow, beautiful, huh? See, when I said, the US is illegal in Guam, there was a papal decree in the fourteen hundreds that created the demoralization line. Now, in that decree, it stated that the governments of Spain and Portugal had to have consent of the indigenous inhabitants of any place that they have found inhabited for Spain or Portugal to be the sovereign ruler of those places. They never asked anybody in fifteen sixty-five if we wanted to be sovereign, if we wanted the Queen of England to be our sovereign ruler. They never asked our ancestors. They just came and put their flags down and said, this is, this land is sovereign to Those are facts. So that's why I boldly state, the US is here illegally. There's receivers of stolen property. Now, how about compensation on Guam? I think you will have less problems here if you really had respect for the people of Guam. We have no compensation for water reparations, noise pollution, uh, Larry, uh, the guy, the fuel line, I think, I believe is empty already. Blow it up, it's in your property, but you can't do that, right? How about nuclear downwind compensation? How about the mental and physical punishment imposed on schoolchildren for speaking their native language? What happened to that? Why aren't you guys doing something about that? It's not the first time I talked about this. Where is it? Noise pollution. Living Gigu, dude, I tell you, I'm getting tanga ready. Because how many exercises the US, does the US conduct over there, up in Gigu every year? Airplanes, helicopters, the helicopters are all over, not only Baragada, not only Pogu, they're down here too, at NCS. They're all over! They go right here at five o'clock. You can tell us about five o'clock in the afternoon because the helicopter goes right straight along on top of Marine Drive. They're showing you that they own this island. And it's so sad that we don't believe in ourselves, because if America wanted to give Guam away right now, as we speak, they can. Did you ever think about that? Did you ever think that you're allowing blanting lives to flourish on this island? Because you're all administering to a foreigner's law in your native land? And you're saying yes, sir, to them? You're pledging your allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, yet you have no rights to it? Isn't there the supremacy law here? Wow! And yet, we're having problems here? We don't even have control of immigration. Then US introduced Guam into the nineteen forty-six in the Committee for Self-Determination. So why didn't US pay for everything that they agreed to do, which they did for Saipan and the Machinist Islands? One, fund them. Two, remove their flag and their presence of the island. How come they never followed or honored a treaty when it came to Guam? Should be asking those kind of questions, because you know, the, if you haven't read up on it, you know you can. Because training has been giving that out, that information out. We've been having that, we've been having this discussion since the seventies. Let's see. Guam, and it's the papago, ta ta za ha it. Presi ga it, ta no, na na mungai compensation para i fino. Hakanakagik, kan tokki loi. Hafagwa, huh? Mas presi su, fino apka, kontra i fino ta. Si gapa ta chikunda oka ni apka, kontra i ta ta ta. Edni ki zen mi zo, fan na zu. So soh onis, si siya Yankee go home. Hafal da man dongi amzo, haf na mungamzo tamatso. Say na mi zo, sti ta no, ginin say namu para i fama gonmo. Ta za guin ita no ta, na fan mo ka samzo, za ya zki na ma pegamzo gu na ulo, ta pu fan mo ka. Presi fa nu yo fan. So Guam, Prime Minister, Guam ma ka. Hafat se nun mi zo. I swear to uphold the Constitution. Zki se nun mi zo, no i dakun. Un na mas presi su dakun lai, kontra i maga hit. That, I swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. Just give me money, I'll, I'll do my own people in for you, master. So remember, good monkeys deserve banana. Because that's what you guys are doing, that's what Eddie Calvo is doing, that's what the judges are doing, enforcing down our throats a foreigner's law that we have and neither does anybody have any rights to. Isn't that defined as slavery? I mean, I learned slavery in school. I mean, English was forced down my throat because I was punished for speaking my language. I had to pick trash with my teeth like a dog at the elementary school because I spoke my language in my native land. So what, we're going to be America again? And never mind about the natives? Oh, I'm no good, I'm incompetent, right? Can you make me, can any of you make me believe I'm a US citizen? Come on! Can any of you, as leaders, so-called leaders, can any of you that have sworn to the Constitution, can any of you make me believe I'm a US citizen? I dare any of you, I triple dare you. Let's get with the facts. No more lies, no more. This is our island for our children. We have nuclear warheads on Guam that beat too, that crashed and burned. Imagine if that nuclear warhead, because you know military law, the order, nuclear warheads must be in preparation, must be there for those aircrafts. We have attack nuclear submarines, we have bombers, we have all kinds of toys for America here. We're the tip of the spear, the front line for their defense. The only thing important about Guam to the US is when we finally invaded or bombed, now they, now they can declare war, because it's national defense. Is that what we want? We want our children to die? What is wrong with us that we don't want to be the owners of our motherland? Education? Education did that to you? Huh? To any of you? To the judges, to the so-called governor? Because you know the organic act, it stays it right there. Your boss is the Secretary of Interior. Congress created, wrote the document called the organic act, and it stays it right there. It also stays right there that I grant you US citizenship without the right to vote for president and that to be obedient to the sovereign laws of the United States of America. Then the King of Spain in eighteen ninety-eight said in the Treaty of Paris, the letter to Guam, be obedient to your new masters. Mentality, we are only a property. We're not, we're not humans. We're not. Look at the, our native animals, extinct. Old excuse was, honey, there's too many damn mosquitoes in Guam, do something about it. So they introduce DDT, Agent Orange, mustard gas, they're even spilling the jet fuel over our island. Come on, you know it. We all know it, there's no secret there, you can see it. Live up in Gigu. See the jet fuel being dumped over our island. How about aqua filter, huh? We found, let's see, Kong, the drums, the fifty-five gallon drums we found in Gigu, near the fire station area, that was used for storage. How many tanks, drums that they find here in Guam, it's all rusted already, that had the seal radioactive or mustard gas that leaked because they didn't care. How about getting some people that worked there that threw away in a hole up in Anderson, toxic waste, inside a hole, instead of getting it, getting rid of it properly? Where is the compensation for all of that? Huh? Where? Let's see, Kong, you can't even pick doni now in, at Rittidian, there's no more doni trees, it's all dead. Ta za! And we love our doni solid in Guam. Na na ta za, guin ulo, there's nothing. But remember, huh? Now close out with this statement. Aren't we supposed to be standing up together for our motherland, for the land that our children is supposed to inherit? And why do we allow ourselves, a foreigner, to rule over us and yet you stand there in your inauguration and lie to the people of Guam by swearing into the Constitution of the United States, who by law destroyed our language and destroyed our culture? Where is the law protecting culture? We have to fight you guys and we still haven't gotten it to go fishing? Go to Palau, go to PI, go fishing in those islands. And when they tell you get out the water, you better get out the water. Da ma, na ma zuo. Guaranteed. Hafeng Guam! Huh? We're so good going against each other for that white man, for the United States, they're wearing the uniform. Yankee, go home. Get out of my island. Show some respect. You have no rights to be in here. Don't believe a word I say, go find out if I'm lying. You know what, you know how to re, you know how to research.
Do me a favor.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Samson. Any questions or comments for Mr. Samson? If not, you can...
Yeah, could I ask?
Uh, just... Tana Frazza, Tana Frazza, for the end of the session. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Albert, S. Augustine, Timor tribe, Senators, Calvo, men with the uniform. I do respect the reasons why these are happenings, okay? Because a lot of people see it different ways. We are still the luckiest people in the world. Those who know what I'm talking about. But a very serious thing that needs to be said right here. And I do respect the tip of the spear. Though a lot of people don't and don't see the reasons why. As we allow you to be the superpower of the world, we no choice. As you fly in your eagles and set your eggs underneath those eagles, we expect our eggs underneath those wings also. And be treated equally. As you come knocking on our doors, show some respect. We're human beings. And we're still the owners of the land. I was asked by a person five years ago to say something like this. Because as a tribe, is the only way people can listen, through the federal laws. So I'm asking for that person who asked me to say that. Give us that right as to equal things out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samson. Any questions or comments, Sanders? And, Mr. Carrillo? If there's anyone else in the audience who would like to provide testimony, please join us at the front table, otherwise we're going to be closing out with Mr. Carrillo's statements. Please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
My name is Lucail Jar Garido and I'm here to, to testify as chairman of the Task Force on Free Association. There's virtue in waiting to be the last person. But there's also virtue in being the first person. Being the last person would be less people to hear what you have to say. And being the first person would be that a lot of people would hear you. Hopefully, in the public hearing for this SEIS, which will occur, I believe, in May, that this is the kind of public hearing that should actually be programmed for the hearing and not this scoping hearing or meeting where you would meet an individual standing in front of a poster to tell him how you feel about this, and then you move on to another. That's a facade. It's actually a strategic move to soften or to reduce public discourse where everybody hears what you have to say. And it's a smart move. Anyway, I hope, I want to be brief because time is of the ascension. And speaking on the basis, as a task force chairman, I want to pretend that I am a sovereign person, equal to the people across the table in negotiating the enumeration of a treaty where military buildup in our nation is to be based on. Right now, this hearing or SEIS is nothing more than a creative sense of participation that the nation that rule over our island is listening to us. It is a civil right. It's not a human right. If we were sovereign like Palau, we would be equal on the table. And that table will be round or will be square so that the delegation of the United States would be on one side and the delegation of our island would be on the other. and the delegation of our island would be on the other. And there is a establishment of a principle in negotiating the treaty that would affect the increase of military presence, not only on Guam, but in the Mariana Islands. I just wanna be brief. I believe that Guam lacks the international experience in negotiating such an action that will tremendously, maybe adversely affect the interest of the local people for hundreds of years. If we don't get our sovereignty, if we don't exercise our right of self-determination, we are actually in an illusion of being part of the solution. We're not. We can all picture ourselves as elected officials, but we are in fact all colonized. We are not equal to the Colonel here. The Colonel is a sovereign citizen of a sovereign nation. I'm not. I'm a citizen of a colonized nation. Now, I'm gonna pick maybe two or three points that I like to bring up because we lack the expertise. I don't look like an expert in international negotiation, but I've been in this business for, when you were teenagers. When a nation is denied or enters into a strategic denial negotiation, there's compensation to be made. In other words, the United States cannot just declare 135,000 square miles of ocean within our EEZ to use and tell our people that they can't go over there and fish for the next two weeks. But it could, she can't because we're colonized. I don't think that the military can say that to Palau. I don't, I'm not very sure this, whether Palau's still colonized, but Palau has an international setting. Palau is able to speak in front of the United Nations as a sovereign nation. So, several weeks ago, there was an announcement that a military training will occur south of Guam that would take, require 115,000 to 135,000 square miles. We didn't say anything. No one said anything. It's compensatory requirement, principle. The, for example, there was a question here with regards to that the training use of Rittidian would take 52 weeks a year, 13 weeks when there won't be any training. But then the statement goes that when the training is not in range, is not in use, public access to the Rittidian area outside of the surface danger zone will be up to the US and Fish and Wildlife. Is there anything wrong with that statement? Because the military is saying that there will be training 52 weeks a year, which means that 13 weeks will be conducive to public access, but the military is not the one to decide that. It's the US Fish and Wildlife. So what does that mean? It means that if the US Fish and Wildlife says, "No, we're gonna restrict public access," so 52 weeks out of the year is not really true. Maybe 62 weeks a year. That's why we don't know how to confront these kinds of negotiations, even though we are negotiating on the basis of no sovereignty, but we can pretend that we are. The other one is maximum local employment. That actually is a principle. And in a sovereign nation, on sovereign nation negotiating for, let's say, treaty, maximum local employment is actually the right of the nation being affected by military increase, that that will be imposed as an enumeration of the right of Guam to say that if there's 10,000 jobs gonna be created, then 10,000 jobs will be taken by local workforce. But if you read the statement, they're talking H2s, H2 workers. That's not local jobs. Could be created by the military in Guam, but H2 workers are gonna do the work. I just wanna let you mention that there's a language problem when someone says Route 3A is not gonna be taken, but Route 3A is gonna be relocated. Is there any difference? We don't know. The military does not speak, does not lie, because it only tells you half of the story. Deadbeat military, deadbeat debt syndrome. I brought that up in the initial DEIS, but I was told to be quiet because it was not germane to the discussion. When you increase military presence in Guam, you increase the possibility of local illegitimate children being born. After World War II, there are many illegitimate children born, and the deadbeat debt go back to the United States. That's why I'm trying to connect this, is that the governor of Guam should argue that should there be children born illegitimately by military soldiers and who left the island, that the naval hospital and the military command here should be responsible for the wealth, for the health and welfare of that baby? It's like the program by the local Attorney General where the father would provide financial help for the welfare of the child. Anyway, in closing, I just want to let the public know, the legislature, that the SEIS has been announced that there will be a public hearing, a comment period, but the SEIS was also required to comply to federal laws during the course of its, of its discussion with the local government, with us, that there are two basic compliance that are very important. One is NIPA, the other one is National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. In both of these laws, public participation and consulting parties are required. It's not an option. And I can tell you right now that the military who are in charge of the buildup are not entirely in compliance to that. I know that if you probably ask who is in charge in making sure that the public is invited as a consulting party, or there was a public participation in the discussion of these projects affecting historic properties, or social, or cultural, or whatever. I can probably stick my neck out to say that that person in charge with the Navy is not doing this job properly, because I want that person to show on the record that people that request to be consulting party be on the record that they were notified of the I know that because I am a consulting party that I've never been given any letter to participate as a consulting party in the buildup. In any case, ladies and gentlemen, and Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, there are many other issues germane to the discussion of the SEIS. One, for example, is water preparation. Although in the last discussion, I was told that you can't discuss that because it's not part of the buildup discussion, but it is. I'm cutting short. As a chairman of the task force, I could discuss many issues, but perhaps that would come in the future when the right of self-determination of our people have actually been respected and provided for by both the United States and the United Nations. In the meantime, we'll just hope for a better response. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrillo. Any questions or comments from Speaker Ben?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carrillo, do you think that the programmatic agreement that was signed under the first EIS and the Record of Decision, that that is no longer applicable to this DEIS and that it should be once again reexamined and redetermined in terms of the scope now of this supplemental EIS and this military buildup too, so to speak? You think it's still binding, or do you think it needs to be completely redone?
Senator Ben, I do know that there was a discussion with regards to that, but I'm not in a position to say one or the other that it's legal now. What I know is that it could be made legal, that what was signed as a PAF for the DEIS couldn't. And I believe the Navy is the one that interpreted that to be the case, where the programmatic agreement can actually be made applicable to the SEIS. But I am not very sure about that. You have to ask the legal advisors of the government.
Yes.
Who made that determination.
Well, we certainly intend to. I mean, we already know that the current programmatic agreement, that we have problems with that, that some of the issues related to the buildup and some of the promises made with regards to the buildup and some of the commitments that the Navy has to follow with regards to the program and pursuing to NIPA and the National Historic Preservation Act, that some of those are not being met at this time. And so, you know, those bring and rise for us questions with regards to, do we need to redo that PA, given the different scope of this current buildup? So we certainly intend to ask that question. I just wanted to see if I could get an opinion.
Apologize, I can't provide any legal answer to that.
Well, I know you've worked with the programmatic agreement, you're a consultant.
I'm not an attorney, so I know that attorneys have different reasons to say that, oh yeah, it's applicable.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to ask the legal advisor or the people that affected that decision that it's applicable.
Well, we certainly intend to.
I wanna say that there are many projects here on Guam, Senator, that are occurring right now and have occurred that are actually buildup-related.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not just saying it.
Hmm.
You know, they're not just saying it, for example, the...
Defense action.
The repair of the Agania.
Bridge.
Bridge.
Yes.
Do you know that that's a buildup-related project?
Yes.
So did anybody got invited to provide any consulting party? That's a requirement. But it's a defense project, but I believe it was given to FHSWA.
Correct.
To pursue the project to its completion.
Thank you very much. This is my say, Mr. Carrillo. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Ben and Mr. Carrillo, thank you very much. This concludes the roundtable discussion. I would like to, on behalf of the committee, extend our appreciation to the Governor's Office, Mr. Cabo, for remaining with us for the duration of most of the conversation, to Congresswoman Bredalio for her representative also being here, and to Jigoo representatives and to everyone who has provided comments this evening, thank you very much. This concludes our roundtable discussion.